Everybody's already standing.
Yeah, we're ready.
All right, welcome to the Board of --
We're waiting for you to speak.
Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, April 8th. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Carr, would you mind leaving?
Absolutely.
Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and two republics for which the stand is my nation, I am God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, tonight's agenda, we're going to have the red mail session followed by public input. At 7:15, we'll have the Police Chief Information Disclosure Date. At 7:45, we'll have the Treasurer Bond Imprecipation Notes, 8 o'clock for the Town Meeting, Town Election, May 6, 2013, Annual Special Town Meeting Recommendations, and then the May of 11, 2013 Annual Town Election More Than Fourth Ball Question. 8:30, we have the Town Administrator Assistant -- Assistant Town Administrator for Finance and Budget, the NASTIOT Land Damage Agreement Form for the Great Road Project, followed by a staffing vacancy review for Highway Department, prepare for joint meeting with the Planning Board to guarding the Fletcher property. At 7:50, other business consent agenda, and that's a few corrections. Okay, Mr. Bergen, let's start with the --
Mr. Chairman, first item in the mail packet is our latest ratings report from Standard and Poor's. It's continued good news. They've affirmed our AA bond rating. The reason that they issued this latest rating is because we're doing some short-term borrowing tonight later in the agenda for some $5.3 million. And so, we received our first rating on a short-term basis. Our long-term bond rating is AA with a stable outlook. Our short-term rating is Standard and Poor's highest rating, SP1+, and they continue to note the strong, consistently strong financial management practices of the town in arriving at that. And as we'll see in a few moments, the sort of interest rate we're able to get even on the short-term, a year ago, we got 0.55% interest for some short-term borrowing. This year, it's half that, it's 0.22%.
Get it that way.
So, that's great to see. We also have in the mail packet an invitation from the Littleton Historical Commission for a member of the Board of Selectmen to address this year's Patriot's Day Observance, which is always held on April 19th, not on the Monday holiday. So, this would be Thursday.
Friday night.
Friday night, April 19th, at 7:00 at Liberty Square. And you may want to discuss who's --
Yeah, Mr. McCurdy did volunteer to do that. I guess he's been doing it.
How many years is it?
I think I've been there every year since I became a Selectman.
Long time.
So, we'll have Selectman McCurdy representing --
I won't be able to make it.
Very good. We have a communication from the Littleton Board of Health every year. We participate in the Central Massachusetts Mosquito Control Project with their recommendation, and they're making that recommendation again to participate in that project. And so, we would -- we do have the budget funds that are set aside to do it. So, we'll continue to be included in that program.
Yeah, and that's a situation where you freshmen, when you call in and request that you have spring, is that correct?
You can.
Mr. Carr, have you had that done before?
Yeah, I've had it too.
Okay. So, we may want to try to somehow let the public know on our website how they can go about doing that.
Sure. And then, the last item I have is a letter from the Governor, Lieutenant Governor announcing provisionally, underscore, what Chapter 90 funds would be for the town of Littleton, depending upon which version passes. If the Governor's version passes, the number goes to $573,000. It's currently at $367,000. That's what we got last year. In the competing versions that the Governor and the Legislature are looking at, we would get a similarly high number, it would end up being, you know, pretty close to 573. But until they actually agree to it, it doesn't happen. And there's a lot of disagreement, as you can see. You know, the Governor's threatening to veto the legislative version. The House was voting on their version today. There are -- so, I think we won't know yet what the final version is. High likelihood, we'll know by a month from now when we're at Town Meeting, and we do have to plug a number into the motion at Town Meeting on the Chapter 90 money. But it's not going to be any less than we had this year. And if it's more, then we'd have that much more to plug into the 10-year road program, which is what we do with all of the Chapter 90.
And you're talking about raising our taxes. It's where the battle is.
Well, yeah, I mean, the Governor's proposal --
The Governor wants over $1 billion, and the Legislature is saying a half a billion dollars.
Yeah, and the Legislature's version is a lot more fees, and the Governor's is a lot more of tax, but so, something --
Raising the taxes to 6.5%.
So, as nice as it is on the local level, you kind of get hit on the state level.
As much as we need this, someone else, someone's going to pay for it. We all pay for it, so.
Right. Very good.
Interesting.
To be continued.
Taxes are going up, that's the bottom line. It's a matter of how much.
All right, well, thank you, Keith. One to public input. I'd like to offer that we should, not for this meeting, but future meetings, that we change the way we do this meeting. Public input, we take information from the public, but we tend to weigh in as well. And I'd like to set up a separate item in our agenda in the future so that we can have it for ourselves. So, public still has their input time, but we have our own input time, maybe geared towards the other business towards the end of the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, what I've done on committees is I'll have Board Member Updates as one item, so we can separate it out.
Separate it.
Yeah, so, we can --
And you're saying you want that at the end of the agenda or the beginning?
I don't have -- I guess I'd open it up for discussion with the Board Members, where you guys want to place it. But I thought towards the end of the meeting might be better, but maybe right alongside of public input. What do you guys think?
Well, I think the purpose of the public input is really for the public to express, bring matters before the Board that we might not otherwise know about. And the way I look at it, when these Selectmen bring public input forward during that period of time, they should be bringing input they have received from the public and bringing it to the attention of the Board.
Correct.
It's not matters of deliberation, because I can't liberate based on public input. So, I see it more like two phases of public input, that we have a period of time when the public always knows they come here at a certain time, and if they have something to say at the Board, they're permitted to do so.
Correct.
I'm not saying we're going to change it. What we're doing is an extension of that.
Correct.
So, I would like to see it all together, just in how we handle it.
What's an idea that members update?
Yeah, I like it, because you know, the things that you bring up sometimes to the basketball team, things like that, you put that out early when people are still actually tuning in, or people are still here. And, you know, I like to, you know, try to advertise some runs and, you know, fundraising events, things like that. So, I'm going to throw it out there at the beginning, you know, put a 2A and a 2B or something.
Okay. So, we're agreeing that then we put it under, just under as a subsection to the public input.
Yeah, 2A, public, 2B?
Okay. Okay, now, I'll open it up to public input. Let's start with public.
A.
All right, see hands in the back. Mr. Crystal.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Henry Crystal Millane. I had nothing to say tonight, and so, you were talking about public input.
Have I made the mistake?
Opportunity for clarification, really. And I, Mr. McCurdy's assessment is something that I have appreciated because I've come here. My retirement would have been very monotonous, excepting for four or five issues that I brought to this Board by public input as the only avenue, since I'm not on the agenda. You see, you have an agenda that you go by, which you should, I mean, that's its purpose. But the issues that I have come here, which I'm not going to amplify now and make political points with, the point is, I did present a number of things here that were non-agenda items, which have been useful, I think, to the town. So, three cheers for public input, just as, you know, it is. It's for items we can't get to you any other way.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Coughlin.
My name is Tom Coughlin, I live in Coughlin Road. I have a question for Board Members. We're spending a lot of money on council in regard to Mr. McCurdy's issue, and you're spending my tax money, and I have no idea why we're doing it. It's a done deal, it's over. And I'd like to know from the Selectmen why we're doing that. And quite frankly, gentlemen, I'm sick and tired of the vendetta that's going on. It takes away from the people's business, and we should be concentrating on the people's business. And the vendetta that's been going on for years, I'm just sick and tired of it.
Okay, so, what kind of action would you like me to take?
So, I would like to know why the Selectmen are spending money on council to go after the -- the last time I was here, you were talking about criminal intent. And I have a letter that says there's no criminal intent, according to Mr. Harrington and Mr. Miles.
Yeah, the question I think that was raised in the last meeting is, can we look into this to see if we can discuss it? And Keith, have we gotten a response?
Yeah, you got it.
The answer's yet, sorry.
Remember seeing it.
So, we can discuss it. So, as far as money that was spent, it was pretty much a simple question of whether we can discuss it or not.
Every time we talk to an attorney.
I don't think we're talking thousands of dollars here.
Chris Simone, sorry, Road, thank you. That letter, that's the letter that was requested at the last Selectmen meeting, that council weigh in on the issue. Can that be read to us? Can that be shared with us?
We can certainly make that available.
Yeah, it probably is.
Sure, yeah, I can make it available.
I think it'll take a while to read tonight.
Yeah, I'm not going to read it right now. I have a copy right there.
Sir. Pat Gray, the Hatterland Road. Alex, you're in an embarrassment with this town. I see you have your friends here, and they're going to support you, but you should resign from your office. You are an embarrassment.
I appreciate your opinion, but I don't agree with you.
Well, let's, we'll agree to disagree.
Nor do we. I'm happy to be doing just that.
Thank you. So, you want to respond to that? I've got hands over here. What do you want me to? I got some -- we'll get to the Board. Go ahead.
I'm probably the oldest person in this room. I'm not bragging. But I remember the McCarthy witch hunts program, where there was a communist under every bed and a conspiracy behind every door. I find a parallel here in what's going on with the investigation of Mr. McCurdy, starting with the charge that there was conspiracy, that he did something wrong in his last campaign. And the Office of Campaign and Political Finance did a very thorough investigation. I was involved in that because I got splashed because I was with another campaign that the Donlins unfortunately were involved with. The determination there was pretty clear. They absolved Mr. McCurdy of any wrongdoing. And yet, as someone pointed out, at the next meeting, charges were made against Mr. McCurdy that he had done something unethical, that there was more to it, and that there was criminal behavior. Could we ask the attorney to get involved in this and get a determination? And that's what Keith is referring there, and Mr. Simone was referring to. I don't know why this keeps going on, but to me, it's very politically motivated. It has nothing to do with what you guys are supposed to be doing up there. You're supposed to be doing, as Mr. Coughlin said, the business of this community. And to come to these meetings or watch them on television and see political sniping back and forth between people up on that side of the desk is really disheartening. It's not what you're supposed to be doing. I have a copy of this. I don't know whether this is worth reading or not, but I'm not going to read the whole thing. But it seems to me that the attorney didn't give to the people that were making charges what they wanted. They wanted to find something wrong, and they didn't find it. So, we have the attorney, we have the Office of Campaign and Political Finance, we have the attorney, someone else from his office, someone from the Alcohol Licensing Board who got involved saying, "There is nothing there." So, I don't know whether you intend to go further with this, whether this is settled now as a result of the letter from the attorney, or what? Keith, is this going further, or what?
That's not my decision. The Board asked for the advice of their Town Council, and they have it. It's their call.
What was the charge to the attorney? Was it against Mr. McCurdy, or was it against the Donlins?
No, the request was for guidance. The Board of Selectmen right here, very publicly, asked for guidance from Town Council on the matters that were arising from the determination by the Office of Campaign and Political Finance, and for guidance on whether the Board could discuss it publicly, on what matters came within their purview officially and written. I think that that's the answer that they got.
Okay, can I just read a couple sentences from this regarding that charge? The Board of Selectmen has the general power to conduct an investigation of any town department. This statutory power is not applicable, however, where the potential subject of investigation is an individual Board Member. Furthermore, with respect to any alleged violations of the state's conflict of interest law and/or Littleton's Code of Conduct and Ethics, the Board is not precluded from discussing publicly the documents issued by OCPF inasmuch as they are public records. However, the Board does not possess the authority to make any binding determination as to whether the violations have occurred. You're acting way beyond what your authority is in making these allegations.
What action have we taken?
They have to get that guidance from Town Council, which they didn't have at this meeting, but they have for this, for the last meeting, but they have now.
But even bringing it up in the first place is going beyond what the authority of the Board is, saying, "Well, we don't accept the OCPF finding."
We never made those implications. Chris, we never made those implications. We had questions.
There's a question of whether it can be discussed, not a question of what's being discussed, not at this point.
To my question, I'd like to hear what the letter said with respect to any wrongdoing.
You have a copy of it. Come on, everybody.
I do not have a copy of it.
Anyway, I --
I have a copy of it.
Yeah, good job.
I just want to say, I think that, I don't know how Mr. McCurdy stays on this Board, quite frankly, because you generally see, there's always some incident where someone is making some accusation or asking for some apology from him for something. It's basically character assassination, and it's politically motivated. It has nothing to do with above-board business going on. And I think you people should look yourselves in the mirror and ask whether you're doing the right thing for the town by pursuing this kind of behavior.
Okay, any other public input? Do you want to respond?
The thing is here, I don't really know where to start. So, we'll go back to the last Selectmen's meeting. Last Selectmen's meeting, a document was released by Office of Campaign and Finance a matter of hours before the Selectmen's meeting. It was produced and read here at this meeting. Yet, we have a document that was produced last Friday by Tom Harrington that assessed, that goes over his assessment of the situation of what this Board asked him to do. This Board asked him to look into what violations may or may not have occurred. And through remarks, through Board Members and other town officials that were in this room, there were suggestions made of things like conspiracy and other things like that. At that point, they asked, committed town resources, and by the size of the letter, clearly significant amount of town resources, to determine where they are with that. So, at that point, the letter comes back, and yet, this letter does not make it to the mail packet. But the last time around, when the Office of Campaign and Finance issued their ruling, that was hot off the presses, the ink hadn't dried, and it was being splattered all over here. The truth of the matter, Mr. Chairman, is that this is one of a series of things where Mr. Carr and Mr. Doucette continually bring up matters for the sake of one thing, and it's not the business of the public, it's a political agenda. Another case in point is when Mr. Doucette took control of the Board the other night when you left. You weren't here for that. And he began to discuss something that wasn't on the agenda, which was essentially an attack on my policy, or my feeling about a policy of a no-hire policy. It's a matter that was long resolved, months and months before. But he chose the opportunity because he had the podium, and he had the power, and he abused it. And so, I think this letter, I think I want to point out what this letter says, and what this Board has done. And maybe you don't realize it, and maybe you don't see it that way, but last I checked, we're all entitled to our opinion. So, you committed town resources for the purposes of determining what was brought up as a matter, and was clearly, had clearly identified me as one of the people that you were looking into. Town Council's response to that is you have no authority, point-blank. There's nobody here in this room that will dispute that. You can talk about it all you want. Well, if you want to talk about it and you have no authority, then guess what? It's politically based. And it just goes on and on. It will go back to Mr. Carr and the whole thing over the Fire Chief selection, and he kept saying, "Well, you can't talk about fire department," letter after letter, opinion after opinion, from legal people kept coming down here and going before the Board, but it did not, it did not produce any, the information he wanted, but he persisted. This is a political agenda. Mr. Chairman, where we need to go with this Board of Selectmen is to drop this crap and start doing the business of the town people, and not spending hundreds of dollars to figure out what we can or cannot do on a matter that's already closed, and we do not have any authority to act on. That's where we need to go. And that's where I suggest to my fellow Board Members, we refocus on what the business of this Board is supposed to be, and cut the political baloney. Thank you.
You want to take notes?
Yeah, I should take a notes. As far as taking power, taking control, I had intended and had the thought to go ahead and ask those questions anyway. The fact that I was in the chair, I couldn't call myself. I would have, if the chair was still actually here, I would have taken the opportunity at his discretion. But since it was, I was acting chair, I took the opportunity because that was, that was when I had the opportunity to bring up what I had already intended to bring up. I think, Alex, you said it clearly last time, that the Board has investigative powers. And that was what you were probably saying. And I, you know, so at that point, I said, "Well, what is that about?" And I don't, I don't know if I went to you for it, but I thought we should not go to you, who doesn't have, is not attorney, so you don't want to try to give legal advice. So, I thought that was something else that we should add into Town Council, to the other request that we had made for Town Council. So, that was, that was why I had asked about that. As far as, I don't know, what else, what else did you bring up? You know?
After watching, I've watched the meeting last week. And Ted, all you said basically was, you know, "Can we talk about it?" And, you know, there was a rebuttal to that, and you said, "Let's have Town Council check into that, whether or not we talk about it." The answer is, yes, we can talk about it. And whether or not Mr. McCurdy thinks it's applicable or not, I think the townspeople have a right to know everything in regards to it. So, the question to Town Council --
In regards to what?
To the fines and the violations in regards to the Office of Campaign and Political Finance. So, the answer from Town Council is, yes, you can talk about it, and yes, you can agenda it and make it a discussion point. That also brings up the Code of Conduct, in my eyes, that, you know, we should update that Code of Conduct. And as you stated earlier, I wanted to, earlier in the year, update the Code of Conduct to change it so that if a sitting Board Member has a family member or a relationship in the eyes of the Ethics Commission, which is, you know, your media family, your wife's media family, just update it so that those folks recuse themselves from the topic of that department, sit in the audience, and participate as a citizen. So, during that, I also asked you about your disclosure in regards to having a full-time firefighter as an employee. And your response was, "Yes, I disclosed that." I have all your disclosures and everything that has been on file with the town clerk, and nowhere have you disclosed that.
That would be incorrect.
See, here you go.
You would have to read some of Tom Harrington's letters.
It's all there. Whatever's with the town, whatever's with the town clerk is what I receive.
But it's not required for that particular case.
Okay, all right, well, show me then. I mean, I guess that's, that's where, you know, it should be on file with the town clerk, any type of disclosure.
The letter was filed from Tom Harrington that discusses.
On file with who?
With this Board.
I've never seen it.
Perhaps you haven't.
Yeah.
It's evident.
Okay, well, that's, I think we need a copy of that, for sure.
First off.
So, let me finish. Let me finish.
No, 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 let me finish. You don't want to interpret the law, you don't want to make the law.
No, I don't want to make the law, Alex, no, I don't. I just want to bring to light some issue that we talked about previously. And my opinion was to update the Code of Conduct, and to hold this Board to a higher authority, and to be open and transparent. That's what I want. That's what I'm talking about. So, well, that's why I want to bring it back to the agenda, and let's talk about it again. In light of these, these fines and violations, I think we should update that Code of Conduct. So, if this ever happens again, we have a document to refer to, to know exactly what we're, we're, the Board of Selectmen have the authority in what type of conduct that the Board of Selectmen are held to.
So, you want to create a Code of Conduct --
I don't want to create a Code of Conduct.
Where Town Council has already said you have no authority.
The Code of Conduct already exists.
That's correct.
It already exists.
And Tom, by the way, Town Council looked at that and said that definitively there was no violation.
And said, "We can discuss it and update it." And that's what Mr. Doucette and the Board was talking about.
I saw this in the letter somewhere here. Would you tell me what paragraph that was in?
I don't have it. Read it.
Doesn't matter if you have it in front of you.
Read it. So, that's, that's where I'd like to see this go. You know, that's agenda, it's the Code of Conduct, it's bringing up, let's review it, update it if necessary, and we can resolve all these issues. So, there is no question, and there is no gray area, and there is no, you know, any type of discrepancies, or it's all in black and white.
Well, you have suggested Code of Conduct specific to one member of the Board. I would say that is more --
No, 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 that's not what I said. What I said was, any member, any sitting member of this Board that has a family member on, employed by this town in any particular department, recuse themselves and participate as a citizen. That's what I said. I didn't say any particular, I said the entire sitting Board, if they have a family member. And none of this would happen. None of this, if that was in our Code of Conduct, Alex, none of the, the conflict of interest stuff that's coming up now would even exist.
See, once again, here you go.
I'm using it as an example.
Is cast a doubt?
No, I'm not casting a doubt, I'm casting a fact.
For everybody to see that you want to do something.
I'm stating a fact. I'm stating a fact.
What is the fact again?
I'm saying that if the Code of Conduct for any sitting member has a family member employed by the town, works for a particular department, that member recues themselves and participate as a citizen. That's what I'm saying.
So, can we explore other areas, like when a member of the Board of Selectmen lobbies a public official about getting his friend hired in a position?
I don't know what you're talking about. What are you talking about? What are you talking about? Well, what are you talking about, Alex?
Well, when we're discussing-
What are you talking about, Alex? Oh, you make these silly allegations, which is absolutely off the wall. I think what I'm hearing-
What I'm hearing here is you want to schedule some time-
Absolutely. Yes, I would, Mr. Chair.
I think it's true, and I think the code of conduct definitely needs to be updated, and I think I've said that from the beginning, that it, I, I just think it's a, it's a document that greatly needs some revision, some clarification, better outlining, and, you know, I think it really needs to be either updated or thrown out and restarted again.
But none of that is the point of this conversation.
Well, that's, we have two conversations going on.
We have two conversations, absolutely.
We have two conversations going on, unfortunately.
Absolutely.
The point of this conversation is, is that, once again, we have diverted our resources off of doing the town business to infighting in this board. And we don't need to do that. Frankly, I'm sick of it. I'm sick of it for two reasons. One, because I want to do the business of the townspeople. Two, I'm sick of being the subject of everybody's ire because they don't like my position. I'm entitled to disagree with all of you, and I am going to-
Whoever said you were, Dad? Whoever said you were? You love to throw that stuff out there, just spin things the way you want to. It's amazing how you do that.
It is, isn't it?
Yeah, you just, you just, you say a lot of words, I hear a lot of words that you're saying.
You would be hard pressed to-
Mr. Chairman, may I have another second?
Effectively, I would have one.
Few more seconds.
It's a political agenda here. I don't see how you could possibly do that.
We got business to get to. We've spent a lot of time.
Mr. Chairman, a few more seconds, please.
Moving on. Let's, let's plan for a future, everybody's in agreement with that, another future meeting to discuss this. We'll have time to add extra information.
Wait, it's not a code of conduct issue, Mr. Chairman, it's not-
Excuse me, sir, could you, the chair has asked you to keep quiet, if you could, please, we'd appreciate it. All right. Until you're acknowledged by, until you're recognized by the chair.
Don't let the public get in your way.
Yeah. Moving on. Any other member updates? Sure, I'd like to congratulate the High School Drama Club. I heard they put on a great, did you see it? You saw, go ahead, Ben. I didn't get you to see it, I was at the track.
I went on Saturday night, and I was extremely impressed by the, the whole production, the courage that some of those kids have to get up and sing in public like that, and all rehearsals they had to go through. And I looked at it, it starts at sixth grade and goes right through to, to the 12th grade. It was, it was well, well worth it, people going. A good family night.
I actually attended the meeting on Wednesday night with Mr. Clyde, was it Wednesday? Yeah, it was Wednesday night, regarding the Shova Road and the repaving, resurfacing of the Shova, or the plans to do that. I don't know if you want to add anything, Jim, but it was pretty, it was pretty obvious that sidewalks were requested, and also having a slower speed limit, I guess, on the road because people were concerned about the speed, but we had more meetings to come. It was a very good meeting, a lot of people showed up, and it was good, we had some great public input.
On Saturday, as I mentioned, the track, the Littleton Track Organization had a great opening. Joey, with that too.
You were the other one.
Yeah, but, and the track team had their first home meet, and I heard it was just, they were just ecstatic to be able to host a meet after five years. So even for the seniors, this was the first home meet they had, if I do my math right. And so I just want to congratulate the, the building committee, the Selectman Finance Committee, everybody who was involved in that, the town for, go ahead and funding it, and, you know, congratulate the track organization for everything that they did to move us forward. Just say, you know, good luck to the kids, and-
It might be a little bit of a goose issue.
Well, yeah, there's always goose, always goose issues.
Are we looking at doing anything to solve that riddle?
We have the dog silhouettes out there, the goose probably wore the silhouette, I think it's better.
Better?
It was a pretty big issue, a little about goose.
Okay, all right, guys, thank you very much. A little bit behind, but we're gonna, unless you got anything else?
No, I'm sorry.
I think it's just you. Okay. Let's move on to our 7:15. What the police, police chief?
I thought I'd come up and sit next to you.
Sure, sure.
How are you?
Excellent, how are you?
Terrific.
Good.
I wasn't expecting this. I wasn't expecting you to write me a two-page letter like I wrote to you.
Well, that's the way I've done things for many years.
I wouldn't have known.
I'm before the board this evening as a continuation of the fact that my department released some personal information back in January. I appeared before the board on the 28th to give a brief update, and at that time, I was requested to come back before the board on the 11th of March, I believe it was, and then we got postponed a couple, a couple times, so here we are this evening. Mr. Chair, if I could, anybody here whose information was released by my department?
John Kelly.
John Kelly. Anybody else press? Anybody else like their tax dollars at work? So the issue here began when the Littleton Police Department was informed on the 24th of January that we inadvertently uploaded some personal information, specifically the information that was out of bounds to be released, were social security numbers. And that took place as a result of some personnel errors within my department, human error, that caused a full log to be transported to our website instead of a brief log. So within our computer system, we have the ability to create two types of logs, one full, one brief. One full includes all the information of an individual that was involved in an incident. A brief log contains information that is set by parameters within our software. The full log was uploaded instead of a brief log because a box was not checked, or the wrong box was checked. It's, there's no direct connection between our software and the internet, it's a PDF file that's created and then uploaded. So we did not, at that time, have appropriate checks in place because this was never an issue before. This is the first time this has happened. So once we were informed by Fox News that this had taken place, we immediately took the, the information off of our website. And I informed the chairman of the board and my two managers about the incident, and right away, we began to try to figure out how to, how it happened, which was quite easy to do, and then we tried to mitigate it to the best of our ability. And you will see in this report, and this report is actually on the town website also, it's a little large, so it's in three different uploads. There is a chronological accounting of what took place from that date all the way up until this date. Different actions that I took, which included immediately identifying those individuals that, whose information was released. Not only the social security numbers, there were a number of individuals on that list whose names and dates of birth were released, but we included them in this category also, so a total of 130 people. We went to identify them specifically to try to get ahold of them. We spent that entire day, which was a Friday, well, actually Thursday night and Friday, trying to identify them. We, by the end of the day on Friday, we were able to contact either personally or by voicemail about 75 of the 130 people. The other 30 people, we couldn't find phone numbers for, because a lot of people just use cell phones these days. So, excuse me, in addition to that contact, we discovered through our IT manager that 310 hits took place on our website during the two-week period, or the 10-day period that the information was up. The information was up from the 14th of January to the 24th of January, 10 days. Fox News called us on the 24th, we took it down. 310 hits. Each hit, at that time, we thought it was a little over two minutes per, per hit. We contacted the Littleton Independent and gave them information, and they posted online. We also went on to our Facebook page and posted information on there. On Friday, we, a letter was placed on our website again. We explained that it was a human error. We compiled that contact information. I received about six phone calls from residents in regards to the release, and two Littleton residents came in to my office and we discussed that, the release also. Two elderly people, very elderly people were on the list, I contacted their families personally and told them about it, because I didn't want to speak to them directly and attempt to explain the situation, so I thought it would be better to contact their families. I constructed a letter to all the residents and non-residents explaining the situation. That letter, you both got a copy of that letter, and a copy of that letter is also in the, the report. The Littleton residents, that letter was delivered to them by my officers on that day, Friday, the next day, the 25th. The letters to the, the people offended in the contiguous towns, we delivered those letters to their post offices that evening, so they would get them the next day. And then Saturday, I went to the Acton Post Office and mailed the other letters to towns around the state and a couple outside of Massachusetts, so they would get there on Monday, the latest. I also spoke to the Little Sun on that Friday. On Saturday, I sent an email, updated the board of selectmen, and the town administrator corresponded with Selectman McCurdy, Chairman Champney, Selectman Knox, received a request from an affected resident to meet early in the week, that was Mrs. Bronson. We corresponded throughout the weekend, trying to get a meeting together. We ended up meeting on Monday, the 28th. I did a phone interview with the Boston Herald, Channel Five and Channel Seven, Channel Five and NECN, we got the information out through them. They were kind enough to come into my office, very comfortable. On Sunday, I updated the board again, sent an email to town employees, updated our Facebook page. Monday, I contacted the Council on Aging and spoke to Pam Campbell in regards to her clients, none of which, their information was compromised. Little Sun, the Independent, we checked with Google and Firefox to make sure that none of the information was cached, and we discovered that there was no trace of that. Town insurance carrier was notified, I updated the board of selectmen. That Monday, I attended the board of selecting meeting, gave the update. So as we go through, we sent a, I spoke to the board about assisting people with credit monitoring. So we sent out another letter to all parties involved, advised them that you would pay for credit monitoring up to a certain amount. Of the 130 letters that we sent out, we got eight responses, eight requests to fund or reimburse them for our credit monitoring. That was about $1,140 for the eight people. The high was 247, the low was 99, the average was 147. So as we continued, the actions that we took, or I took, within my department, I spoke to the individuals, employees that were involved in all the information, I spoke to their supervisors, I wrote two departmental orders, one regulating how information was dispersed from the Littleton Police Department to the general public and the media, and the other was to put stricter controls in place in regards to information accuracy. And we, I contacted the, or through Mr. Bergman, our insurance carrier was contacted, we put a plan together in regards to the credit monitoring, that was facilitated through my office, then went to the insurance company, and at this time, the eight people, as far as I know, have been reimbursed. I've corresponded with, I believe, seven out of eight, asking if they've been reimbursed them, they have been in full. One of the compounding issues, excuse me, I then had meetings with all my supervisors, discussed the issue as a whole, then specific situations, and how some situations, yours was compounded. Mrs. Bronson, we discovered that her information was released, however, when her vehicle was stopped, she was the passenger and not the driver. So how the heck does her information get put into our log when she's not even driving? The software, when we put in the last name, and it's already in our database, it offers a menu of possibilities, and another error was made, clicking a box. So part of those departmental orders that I put in place was to a verification step to make sure that that didn't take place again. So with all this, we have put a number of steps in place. I believe that we were upfront and took responsibility right away. As the chief of police for the town of Littleton, I continue to acknowledge my ownership of this error and my responsibility to those offended by it. I believe the Littleton Police Department has demonstrated this through the action that is taken since the error's discovery on 24 January, some 11 weeks ago. We have traveled a proprietary path paved with honesty, transparency, and resolve. Our only objective is being effective in satisfactory resolution to those aggrieved, and taking necessary steps to ensure this error does not take place again. So that is my update. Obviously, more details within the written report, and I believe Mrs. Bronson had some, some questions, if the board has questions.
All right, just a comment, I mean, you know, you made us aware of the problem right away, and you worked quite diligently trying to resolve the issue. Now, you didn't really talk about what, it appears that this was a mistake that was made internally by one person, is that correct?
Initially, but then with Mrs. Bronson's case, there was a couple people involved, yes.
And you've put procedures in place to prevent this from happening?
Those two departmental orders that are within the, the report address the issues that caused the problem.
And, you know, I like the fact that you acted swiftly in offering credit monitoring. I'll tell you my own personal experience, I had a credit card that my information was compromised. It took them two years to tell me that your information was compromised. Well, you did it in what, a matter of days?
Well, that's Fox News, hell.
Once he discovered it. But, you know, I mean, you know, you acted very swiftly is the point there versus waiting for a long time.
Well, there's no denying, we made a mistake, and when you do that, you have to take responsibility for it and move forward, how are you going to address it to satisfy those people that you've, that you've wronged? That's what we tried to do.
Before I open up to the public, board members, any other comments?
Yeah, I guess I can get a little comment. You know, it's tough to know whether or not the police department, the chief, deputy chief, and all the staff have done the right thing, because personally, I've never been exposed to anything like that, until- Because personally, I've never been exposed to anything like that until March sixth of two thousand thirteen. I received a letter from TD Bank. I'm not going to read the whole thing, it's two pages, two and a half pages long, but you'll get the gist of it. "We're writing you to let you know about your, an incident involving your personal information. We want to inform you that some of your personal information was included in two backup tapes that were intended to, intended to curry between two of our locations. On March of two thousand twelve." "The tapes have been missing since then. We have been unable to locate them and despite the continued efforts, we reconstructed the data and on the tape we determined that you may have been included, your name, your address and your social security number." So here, again, not having been exposed and not, I know that the police department reacted quick and I think they did the right thing in, in the way they reacted. But not having anything to say that, you know what, is, did they do the right thing? It just goes to show that a year later, I receive a letter in the mail saying, you know what, your information's been compromised. So, you know, to, to that, when you found out, you reacted extremely well in my eyes in comparison to a, a huge bank like TD Bank. And they're offering the same thing, enroll in free credit monitoring for twelve months, a year later. So I can now see that, you know, when I say you were fast, you were quick, I, I believe it because seeing TD Bank, they weren't as good. And I commend you and your staff. And it's unfortunate that this mistake did happen and it was a, a human error. And I think, I, I, I think that, you know, by the orders that you have in place, you know, it's still human. We all make mistakes, but hopefully those orders in place, this won't happen again. Thank you.
I have first a comment and then a question, something I didn't understand that you said. Yes, it's fortunate you're not like TD Bank. I got one of those letters too. Waited, did you try to enroll in?
Oh, I'm still battling with them.
That'll be two years before you're actually enrolled. So, you know, I appreciate the fact that you jumped on this immediately and, and, you know, it's very important that you also took ownership and directed the department through several steps to take care of this. My other question was, was, was there a policy in place before that you had to modify? Or a practice that you were following? Or this just hadn't been addressed?
It was a past practice that worked up to this point. And human error showed us that, that past practice was not infallible. So we put this in place formally and educated everyone on it.
And just out of curiosity, and just because you said it, I don't think it really has a lot of bearing on, on the information release, other than, you know, it happened to be the release. But how is it that, that in a, in a computer printout, the passenger of the car gets, ends up on the record?
Once again, when the last name is placed into our software, if the last name has already been placed in there, if there's already a record in there, the software will offer a menu. Mrs. Bronson's information came up in that menu, as did her husband's and some other family members. And instead of checking her husband's, hers was checked. So it's a manual exercise.
So Chief, what you're saying, someone's looking at the ticket and they're putting it into, or looking at whatever document, and they're going and putting that into an electronic form?
That's correct.
And it's autocomplete? I mean, it happens in offices, you know, the internet. You type in your name and sometimes your email comes in because it's kind of an autocomplete thing.
Okay. My question is, can I?
A lot of, mixed emotions on this, or mixed thoughts. You know, it comes out and, you know, obviously, we're not ha, you know, we're not happy that this comes out. You know, I'm, I'm still not happy. I think getting this report, which is very comprehensive, and I was the one who asked for a summary and a follow-up. You know, I was expecting, you know, four or five pages double-sided with, you know, what was going on. So this is a, you know, very comprehensive report. What I see is that this is something that somebody probably does every week, every couple of weeks or twice a week. And at some point, they forgot to click a button or forgot to un-click a button. Somebody called them, something, they got distracted and it got uploaded. One of many, several hundreds of times it happens. I think we all have similar situations in our jobs. It's unfortunate that this one little click or not click had such repercussions. So while, while my initial reaction was release of information, huge mistake, the cause of it, which I kind of had to read through, I kind of wanted to, I wanted to see the cause more. You kind of, once you read this report, you kind of realize what happened with the backfilling as, as far as Mrs. Bronson's concerned. And then as far as, you know, like Alex said, how do you, how do the law, you know, how it goes in from, you know, the ticket to the, to the paper, to the electronic copy. So I think that the release is very bad. I think the cause of the release is an unfortunate minor error. So I'm kind of balanced here. This is a, this is a big mistake, it's a small way it happened. I think that, you know, being on here for almost two years now, I think this is the first time that I think there's ever been anything from you and I think, you know, any type of mistake that's had this type of problem. And I think people can speak for me. I think your record before this has been pretty darn shiny. For how many years, twenty-eight, thirty years?
Fifteen, Mr. Chief.
Okay, fifteen. So whilst unfortunate, I think it's obviously an isolated incident over this much time. One question, now you did not feel, or what, did you feel that there was any need to take any disciplinary actions or anything like that against the people who clicked or didn't click?
No, I did not, because I'm the individual that didn't have the proper, what appears to be the proper check in place. So they were following proper protocol as we have always done.
Okay. So I think that's a good way to close it out, is you've dealt with your people. I think it's important that this gets closed out. And don't jump on me yet. I think we need, the board needs to state clearly whether or not there's any type of thoughts or actions or anything to be said. Now, I'll go with, if you want me to throw it out, I usually tend to speak first. I don't think there's any reason to find that the chief on this point has, needs to have any type of, you know, record or admonition or anything. I think the response was very good. It's an unfortunate no-click or click and isolated incident, unfortunate huge repercussions. But, you know, I think, you know, isolated incident and I think we closed.
There's no malice, there's no malice in that.
No.
You know what I mean? It's purely, purely.
It's a human error?
Yeah, I think it's important, but I think it's important to close it out. I mean, he came before us a few times, produced this report, and I think there needs to be some, I don't think there needs to be a vote, but if there's a general understanding that there's no further action required by the board or, it doesn't, it sounds like that's the way it's going. So I think it should be closed out somehow like that.
Just quickly, I just echo a lot of the statements that this board's already made. Obviously a human error, no one wants to ever see that happen. I did check with a town administrator shortly after it happened to get his input and he strongly felt that all the measures had been taken, that needed to be taken and nothing else that should come of it as far as the chief goes. I personally had someone very close to my family who went through the situation. Know exactly frustration, I could see the frustration and the emotional strain. Some remarks were fired at me, and understandably, and I can understand. But I think as time went on and after talking with the chief, things calmed down tremendously. I think the person involved in this knew exactly that it was a human error, someone pushed the button and was very satisfied at the results that had come from trying to, trying to fix the problem. So it's, once again, we all recognize it's not something that you want to see happen at the same time. I think the steps were taken, needed to be taken.
Okay, I'll open it up to public. And I guess for the record?
Yes, Jenna Bronson, I live at one forty-two Harvard Road. And the bulk of this report, in fact, concerns me and my request of the chief to respond directly to four issues that I brought up. I was surprised to get such a lengthy report and I appreciate the time that he put into responding to me, but also the internal measures that he took within his own department. So I actually have margin notes where I wrote "good" with an exclamation point. So there are some things in here, but the fact that the log's not going to go up on, on the homepage anymore, that if people want the police log, it will be, you know, retained at the police station or you can request it by fax or a phone call and have it sent to you electronically. I, in reading through the report, just have a few questions, if you don't mind, may I ask? Okay. So in tabulated section three, which is your first, where you have your departmental orders, the second page of number one, you have in paragraph three, procedures in preparation, you have three enumerated paragraphs where you talk about the steps that shall be taken. Paragraph one, it's, it's you or your designee. Paragraph two, it's the chief or the deputy chief. And paragraph three, you're talking about an appropriate manager. Is there a potential that you could be all three of those people at any one time for any one entry into the log?
There's a potential that I could be. However, if I'm unavailable, I have to be able to have individuals act on my step.
Sure, I'm not questioning your authority to delegate. It's more, I'm concerned about you being the same person for the three steps. So that if your presumption of something in step one would then infuse your presumption in step two or three without a second person checking it.
Second set of eyes, check and balance.
I was, I was curious as to whether the policy could indicate that you can't do all three. I mean, physically, you're able to, but that
Understood.
policy-wise, you wouldn't do so. Another question that I had was in your second departmental order on the second page, also under procedures. Communications, enumerated paragraph number two. This is when the dispatcher is gathering information. He or she would place the information into your internal database. And that there are multiple choices on that backfill men, backfill menu, which is what I fell under as Bronson. Last name, first name and date of birth. Is the policy to be that you will check all three of those? Or you'll check the last name and if there are no other matches, you will not look at the first and the birth?
No, you'll always check to make sure. And on top of that, once the entry is made, a hard copy of that specific entry is made, passed on to the officer that's doing the report. And he or she makes sure that that log entry matches everything they have from the field.
Okay. And that brings me to my next question on the following page, under patrol, enumerated paragraph three, the second bullet point with the backfilling. It says the incident shall be checked against the dispatcher's log entry, which I think is what you just referred to. If there's a discrepancy, which one prevails?
Well, that, that would have to go to discussion, I guess, and they would have to work that out. And if the information could not be determined to be accurate one way or the other, contact would have to be made with the person involved.
Okay, and that goes to the next bulleted paragraph with the reporting officer checking the citation entry for accuracy? And that that internal citation must mirror the RMV citation? Does that mean that the internal citation is then the lead to then report to the RMV?
No, no, that's just an internal record of ours. The RMV gets a hard copy and that's the only transmittal to the RMV.
In tabulated section number four on the last page of the letter from Attorney Reynolds, this was addressing specifically why the police had social security numbers to release at all. And my concern as, social security numbers don't include any sort of biometrics. It's my name and my number. There's no date of birth, there's no address, there's no other identifying information. And that social security numbers are used primarily to figure out, you know, what I can claim when I get to be old and gray, if I make it there. I'm already gray, if I get to be old. So I'm curious, and I do see that the, and I read the U.S. Code today, section eighteen, sorry, chapter eighteen, section twenty-seven, twenty-one B, that the RMV is permitted to hold that information and to disclose it to law enforcement when law enforcement is carrying out its function. I am concerned that the police have my social security number and how is any functionality of your, of your job to protect and serve at all tied in with my social security number?
Well, we use, as it states in the U.S. Code and also the Registry of Motor Vehicles, all the rules and regulations that I gave, it is a backup identifier specific to you. So we are constantly using social security numbers to identify or to make sure we have proper identification of individuals.
Is there a way for the police department to somehow then obscure that number so that it's kept internally and that it's, it's not ever released in any other way ever again? I mean, is there some way you can X out the first three numbers or the middle numbers or something? I know the first three have to do with where you were born, so maybe that's not the best thing to choose because most of us are probably zero, one somethings in this run, if we were born here. So my, my concern is that you, you're holding information which is ripe for identity theft because it lacks all those biometrics. And is there any way that you can, you know, some way obscure that so that even you can't see all of my social security number? And you know me now, so you know, you know what my number is. I mean, that's my concern, is we got this sort of funny number that, that we all have and it's so personal.
There is your printout from the registry. So if I put in your name and date of birth,
Yep, I see that, I see it comes up.
All that information comes up.
I see that.
Okay?
Yep.
And that is filled into our database. The controls that we now have in place will ensure that that doesn't get released. However, it is still actively in our database.
But it's, it's added?
Can I interrupt just a second? What you gave to Jenna, does that have social security?
That's just, that's just for her.
Right, no, I understand, but just so that we all understand.
Yes, so what I gave to her was, just to demonstrate as my license is in your packet, when you put in a name and date of birth, a name and an address, the individual's information will come back and part of that information is social security number.
From the RMV?
Even though you don't ask for it, that's correct.
Thanks.
Because they attach your social security number to your license number, your name, your date of birth as back, background information, background identifier.
So when you get that information from the registry, is that automatically
Yes.
put into your database?
Yes.
And, and it's IMC's database?
That's correct.
Is it possible to put a filter in so that once, once it comes from the registry, then the IMC database automatically provides additional filters?
That does have a social security number.
So that maybe the last, only last three numbers show or something like that?
I do not believe so. I can certainly check that out, but obviously, we want to make sure that our officers have that information available to them if they need it to further identification.
But at no point would an officer say, "And I need your social security card." You need to prove that to me. It's not, it's not seen as identity.
That's correct. That's why I would never ask you. That was one of your questions. At no time do we ask people for it because it's automatically, as a result of U.S. Code, attached to it.
Well, it's, it's only attached to it because Massachusetts happens to be grandfathered in. I mean, it's, it's
How many other states are grandfathered in?
The only one I care about is the one I live in.
And that's the one that's grandfathered?
Yep, and my, my, again, my concern is that you have an identifying piece of information, which I had to provide to the registry when I went to get my license. They obscured it by giving me an S number. And yet, when they disseminate their information, when you, you know, hey, this person is driving like a crazy person, we're going to pull her over, you get my social security number.
Correct.
But to me, that seems like information that the police don't need to have.
I respectfully disagree. And as a result of this error, we put steps in place to ensure that that doesn't, that is not released again. You know, I understand where you're coming from completely. As I said, you know, I get the anger, I get the
I'm not really angry, I'm concerned that you have I'm not really angry, I'm concerned that you have, the police have a piece of information that when I operate a motor vehicle, my license says S.
You can go on the internet and get all kinds of information about yourself, anyone in this room.
Yep, I understand that, and some of it's accurate and some of it's not, but my social security number being tied to my date of birth, my address, my name, the vehicle that I own, and that's registered to me when I was a passenger in a car driven by my husband and individually registered to him, that's very concerning. And I understand, right? You got to pick the lawyer who's going to be a thorn in your side to, you know, have a, have this gigantic report, like, I get that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, and I see in the correspondence, it was me and Jen Barlow, right? And you seem to think that I met her through Facebook.
Oh, no, I know that you've known her for a long time.
Okay, she's my triathlete swimmer.
That's correct.
So we
I got that off the internet.
Undefeated triathlete.
TMI.
Yeah, let's keep moving.
All right, the point, the point being, I'm, I'm not angry, I'm concerned. I'm concerned that there's a statute out there that protects businesses and TJX.
Well, that's way beyond
I, I understand that, but my point is TJX released all this information, a statute was put in place, and the punishment for that is a strict liability, $5,000 per record. I mean, I, I don't know
For businesses.
I understand that it doesn't apply to municipalities, but why shouldn't it? Why should municipalities be held to the same high standard that we hold TJ Maxx to? I mean, it seems to me that you hold an incredible amount of information, and I understand that it's part of protecting and serving, I get that, but why not have filters in place to protect people's personal information? And I see that you're not uploading things to a police log, terrific, that's a great first step, and my margin note says "good" with an exclamation point. But even Harrington in his letter said, "If you were to do this, you could follow the best practices as established by that statute."
Well, that's for encryption.
Correct, correct.
And that has nothing to do with us retaining social security numbers. That has to do with the encryption of information with a direct connection to the internet, which we don't have.
Which you don't have.
So it all comes down to, people made a mistake.
Can I ask another question here? Back to the database thing. So if any member of the department owns a name, all that, all that information appears, correct?
That's correct.
Would it be possible to ask IMC if they, if they need that information, that they would have to query it first? In other words, you, you were just talking about it being a, a method to make
It's a mastercard.
sure that you've made the proper identification. And if that was in question, then you might be able to query the database and say, well, I'm not sure, what's the social security number? That seems to be sort of halfway there and doable.
Well, the social security number is already going to be available through the RMV, and they're going to get it from the RMV first instead of our database. Our database would come into play so we could verify positive past contact with individuals. If we have another department that calls us and says, "Did you have activity with this individual? Yes, we did. Name, date of birth, same, social security number, different. Okay, it's not the same person."
Is there any way that you can look at this to see whether or not the system can be set up so that it
Sure, I can look at anything you want.
Just, just, I think so people can sleep at night knowing that their social security number isn't floating in town.
Well, I think it's, I think it is
Say it, John.
A little exaggerated point that social security numbers are floating out there. Yes, we did release some, absolutely, that was our, my mistake, my responsibility. We took action to make sure that doesn't happen again. I'd have to say that we're going to be hyper vigilant, and we have been for the last 11 weeks. We've had no contact from anyone in regards to their information being breached and used illegally. Could it still be? Absolutely. That's why we're keeping track of it still.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you find you could have some sort of criminal case or some sort of investigation where you are, that information, social security numbers are useful to you?
Every day.
I just take one more comment.
Sure.
Mike, the only reason why I found out about the improper backfilling is because Fox News exposed it, right? If, if my husband's information had been exposed, right, if it was his stuff that was up online, he would have said, oh, yep, I was pulled over by the police. But mine was sort of a special case, because I had no interfacing with the police during that time period. So there's the question of how many records in the Littleton Police were improperly backfilled prior to that, because the only reason I knew was because of the exposure of this incident. And I don't even know how you could go back and check that, because
Impossible, I've thought about it.
And I have a question to the chief about that. What is the danger of somebody in the past being backfilled before?
Well, what is the danger of any of us making an error during the day?
No, I know, it's, it's higher for the police, but let's say somebody gets recorded as getting a warning when they shouldn't have.
I see, I see. It's, that information is just internal to us. Going back to the citation that was issued that day, we keep an internal copy of that citation, which is electronic, but that is just proprietary to us, it is not transmitted to anyone, it's not supposed to.
Right. Let's, okay, let's take a step forward.
The RMV gets their information from the hard copy.
Okay, answer, question answered.
Do all the other towns in the Commonwealth follow that same procedure and policy?
Every single one.
So this could happen in
Absolutely, and I would, I actually put out an email to my fellow chiefs, a number of them saying, hey, you know, you guys have IMC, here's the situation I'm dealing with.
And has any other best practices come from any other chiefs?
A number of them have, have typed the things down.
Or have they copied what you've done? Okay, I see a hand way in the back, Mr. Crystal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I worked in software my last 20 years before I was 70, I worked on computer software, a big company, or banks and security software, and what we're seeing here, and the police department, I think, did a fine job. I mean, it was certainly laughable in a way, you know, you say the police department, the security people let this information out, but it's just things that can happen, and they did a very, very good job of wrapping it up and finding a solution. And they admitted it, and they pinned it down, and everybody's aware. But this kind of problem is not related to the police department. This is related to the way we educate people in business at this terrific fast pace, using all kinds of software. Salesman comes to the door, use our software, this is wonderful, it does this, it does the other, blah, blah, blah. No idea of, you change a code, you change and move a field from here to there, you can change the whole nature of it. And who explains this to the people? So this little example we're going through here, because the police department can be all over town, it can be anywhere people are using the public's data in administration, it could be the administrative offices, it can be anywhere. I remember when my social security number was on my driver's license. That's the state of Massachusetts, you can probably remember that too.
Yeah, I, I lost my license, and it had my social security number on it. I was scared.
The state did that for years. So this is not police department issue. What it is, it's an issue of the times, and how well is the town really looking at the decisions they make with software? How do they train people? How do they really review upgrades and the impact of who's running it? This is a massive
Do you have any suggestions, or just a point?
Well, I don't want to make them hear, but I'd be happy. I'd help, it's clear what people want to know about this. But I think the town needs to think about it, you know, maybe the, the people that do the board for reealing personnel, a personnel board kind of thing, I mean, it's, it's a training issue. It's a training issue of how you control stuff you buy, and how you train your people. And beyond that, that is not a police department, it'd be any one of us. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
I think his point is kind of well taken, and maybe we should make sure that the town's overall IT policy takes this event into consideration in developing IT policy.
To make sure that we're not leaking, you know, the potential leaking out of public information goes beyond, beyond just the police, but holistic.
Keith, do you want to, do you want to send something to Nancy, say, hey, you know, based on what happened, what do you think of the whole security, the security of the rest of the town?
Why don't we take a look at the policy?
Yeah, why don't we take a, yeah, good point, Mr. Carr, I think maybe we should look at the policy of the town as a whole, and see if there's anything we can do.
We can address them.
Just see if she can get back to us in two months and say what she thinks of
Yeah, I mean, our IT policy, our, our department works closely with the electric department, they're our source for all that we do, so we can do something coordinated with them.
Yeah.
Just, sure.
Yeah, and they may have
Do they have social security numbers over there? No?
No.
Well, if you sign up for a utility bill.
Anyways, okay, any other thoughts, points, questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to
I'll get
hear my concerns, and, and I appreciate all the hard work that the Littleton Police put into addressing this, and specifically addressing my concerns, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, not really my point.
That's all right, I don't worry.
When I, when you
Actually, you know, I learned quite a bit.
Me too, yeah.
Jenna, when you started, you said you had four issues. They all been resolved?
No.
Okay.
I, I would like to see this police not having in their Littleton Police Department database my social security number, despite the fact the registry gives it to them.
Yeah, from what I've seen, it seems to be it's beyond what we can do for the questions, what he, what he, okay.
Yeah.
So you can take that up with the state.
Maybe, I will.
And then you had, you had, you came back with four questions, and you had a bunch of questions, those were different than your issues.
Thank you, yes, they've been addressed, I appreciate it.
All right, you want to go to Jerry first, and I'll go back.
There's a couple of comments of Jerry Delpore and Mr. World. I mean, I work in engineering, we make mistakes, it's more, how do you set it right, how do you make sure that it doesn't happen again? And we also know that software is, these days, like somebody said, if a computer programmer, if architects built buildings like computer programmers built software, the first woodpecker destroys civilization. The biggest problem is, there's too much information out there, as you point out, the chief punches your name in, the social pops up from the register, nothing he can do about that. I'm glad he's fixed the human error issue. You should probably also talk with the IT people, if the town has IT professionals, and make sure, for example, that firewalls are secure, and there's no way somebody maliciously could hack the police department's website.
Yeah, there's no connection between our internal software and the internet, so they can't get to it. It was strictly a manual, human exercise. And the only reason it took place is because we were trying to be helpful to the press by uploading the logs onto the internet.
And they helped you back?
Yes, they did. Mike Bodak, Mike Bodak.
If we got something quick, let's
Well, I'd just like to state, I'd like the minister to reflect that the board feels that this matter is closed, and there's no further, no further action necessary, if that's where we're at.
Well, I think we, we do have some follow-up on the IT side.
The matter with the police chief and the release of information, the matter is closed, if that's
I'll open that up to the rest of the board, if the rest of the board
I think it worth noting that we need to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll look for a motion. Is that your motion? No, I'm not making a motion.
I'll make a motion that the board of selectmen has determined the events from the release of information on January, January 14th, January 24, 2013, has been vetted and shall be closed, but no further action.
Second.
Move and second, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As opposed?
You abstaining?
No.
Okay, 5-0-0. Okay, good, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on and try to get back on track here.
Good job, that's why.
And you're up, we got a bond anticipation note.
We do, change of pace. See, sense of apologies for nothing you were doing.
We'll get to it in the next time. Okay. Boy, boy, boy. You want to just give us a real
I'll sign a million times for that document.
Just a quick high-level overview, I mean, we kind of touched on it before, but
What this is due to us, we've heard this.
So this is a band.
Excuse me, if the gallery can
Hey, keep it quiet.
Please, thank you.
So this is a one-year band, a bond anticipation note for just over $5 million.
Excuse me, the chatter, if you didn't hear us, the chatter's distracting, sorry.
So the bulk of it is the water well, I think it's well number two, the borrowing, plus it has some other smaller ones that have been rolled back in, some other water borrowing, Russell Street, some track money, to bring the total to the 5.3 million dollars. So it's one year, the yield, as Mr. Bergman knows, was 0.22, which is fantastic.
Incredible.
Right, which, which is directly tied to our bond rating and our, and our financial policies, which is
Wow, that is amazing, how low that is. Board members, any other discussion?
General obligation municipal bond, we do it every year for
I'm disagreeing. All right, I'll look for a motion.
Move the board of selectmen vote to a dot, the form of the vote prescribed by bond counsel, a copy of which is attached here too, and may part hereof, relative to the sale of $5,348,907, general obligation municipal purpose bond anticipation note of the town dated April 12, 2013, to Jeffries and Company at the net interest cost of 0.227%, and payable April 11, 2013.
Second. Move and second, is all those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? The ayes aye.
We just got a lot of signing to do now.
There's one there that's just with the clerks and Mr. Carr, that's just, I think that one's pass that down to him, we got to sign that one. There you go, Alex. Want to start on another one? Quick one here, signatures.
We can do, we can do electronic signatures, that's the way to them here.
I know. Maybe next time we can set this up for electronic signatures, you know, yes, maybe. We got to sign these.
Well worth it.
0.227%, come on, sign. I think the ink is worth more than the percent.
This is nothing compared to by the house, don't they?
No. I'll tell you what's warm in here tonight.
Yeah.
There you go. I'm done. Okay, yeah, moving on to the town meeting articles.
Alex?
Sorry. There you go. We want to, no Megan's here.
Yeah, I suggest we start with an update from the Littleton Commons Sewer Feasibility Study Committee, since Megan's
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, at the Littleton Commons Sewer Feasibility Study Committee meeting tonight on April 8th, the committee voted to request that the selectmen actually remove Article 8, Borrowing Littleton Commons Smart Sewing Preliminary Design, from the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting. This decision was made due to the compressed schedule and the amount of information that we have found is needed to be shared with the general public. We feel that by postponing until fall town meeting, that will allow for a better opportunity for us to inform the residents and the voters on this very complex topic. And additionally, we feel that we need more time to meet with town boards, committees, and fully inform and discuss with them the details of our study. And also, it's no secret that there is a group of residents that are, who are outwardly opposed to this preliminary design, and we would like to take time between now and fall town meeting to sit down with those who are opposed, and to fully hear and understand their concerns. During this time between now and fall town meeting, we will plan additional public forums near fall, and meet with property owners, and will continue to utilize any available resources so that we can fully inform the public. So here's a letter for you guys.
Great, thank you. You give one to Jen for, for the record as well.
Mr. Chair, I felt Meg
Sure.
You know, Megan has done an outstanding job on this, on this committee. As a citizen at large, you know, being the chair, she's taken the bull by the horn, so to speak. And the decision of the committee to educate those who are ill-informed is a fantastic idea, because I think this is too important to rush. It's too important for the town. It's too important for all those buildings downtown. And, you know, the Conan Building, the old elastic building, some of the antiquated vacant buildings that are down there that can't be leased because of issues with this epic. So, I commend your committee, I commend you, and job well done. I look forward to the educational piece that you guys are going to be rolling out in April 26th.
Well, April 23rd, and we'll definitely keep everybody posted on that.
Fantastic, fantastic.
All right, any other thoughts, board members?
No, just, even the letter is well worth it. And once again, I'd like to thank the committee, and a lot of people on the committee that have done a tremendous amount of work. And we all know, we volunteer to those committees, sometimes if this gets posted on, you think the committee's going to stop, and now you're like, at least six more months.
It's never ending. But John, I'll get to you guys. Good, good, good work.
Thank you.
Great work.
Mister Simone. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Yeah, I mean, whenever citizens get together, whether they're on a committee or otherwise, to commit time and resource to understand an issue, we have a voter participation committee, which has a mission and purpose to accomplish no less than to have citizens get involved, to inform themselves, to study, to learn. That group, to which you both referred, Megan more respectfully than Selectman Carr, have studied the issue of sewer, have read the 207-page report, have gone through various minutes, in fact, every set of minutes, from their meetings. They've studied the issue, they have then expended funds to get out there and communicate it. That is the mission and purpose of the voter participation committee. That's what you hoped to accomplish. And what do we get in return? We get Selectman Carr, gentleman like Ken Smith saying, ill-informed, educate these people, insults. It's simply counterproductive.
No, 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 no. It's the information you're putting out there. I think, I think the committee's like, where you care.
Selectman Carr, I want to debate you on the issue. I don't want to debate you. I don't want to debate you. In public, anywhere, anytime. You don't know the issue.
No, Selectman Carr.
No, Selectman Carr.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Guys, 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 let's-
I'm simply looking for recognition that citizens getting together to study an issue is at the very essence of voter participation. It makes us a better community.
And we're doing, are we not agreeing to do that?
We are doing that. I'm taking issue with the ill-informed, what the facts are wrong. Selectman Carr, if I put you on the spot, you couldn't cite three facts on the, on the noswore.com website.
I don't think you will put me on the spot, because everyone will allow it.
Go ahead.
All right.
Go ahead.
Sit down.
No, Selectman Carr, you make charges of an ill-informed citizenry. You call people ill-informed. Ken Smith calls them childish.
Enough, enough.
And none of that is the case. If you go to no-swear.com, residents, decide for yourself. Is the information frivolous? Is it childish? Is it ill-informed? It isn't. And you owe the citizens more than that. Participation makes us better, not worse. What you do-
Mister Simone, Mister Simone.
No, wait, Megan, 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 talk to, talk to his chair. I have a question for Mister Simone.
No, 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 no. Hold on, hold on, guys. Hold on! Go ahead, Megan.
Oh, Mister Chairman, I'm sorry. I just would like to invite to get together with Mister Simone and anyone else that is opposed to the sewer, because I think that we probably could share some really good information with each other, since we've both been studying it for about three years at least.
Megan, I welcome a conversation, but recognize we've studied your reports.
She just did. She just said.
Mister Chairman, I'm-
She just recognized.
Tell us where a discussion-
Mister Chairman, I'm recognizing Mrs. Ford's invitation. I think that's wonderful. Conversation is always helpful. But it's, but if the information we're going to get is further, is reflected in the 200-page report, or otherwise already on your websites or in your minutes, please understand, we've digested it, we've had experts look at it, we've had forensic accountants study it, and we understand the issue.
I'd like to-
And so, we may continue to disagree with you. And we welcome and appreciate your right to have a different opinion. We, myself, and I'll speak only for myself, have a different one. And frankly, very proud that so many people have committed so many hours to understand an issue which would have had such an impact, potentially economically, socially, and environmentally, on our town. And I'm thankful they have. And every issue needs to have two sides reviewed. You've reviewed the say yes and keep going side, we reviewed the other. That's a good thing. I think it's a good thing. The only negative I'm calling attention to tonight, hopefully productively, is the, is the cast aspersions, just because we disagree. That's not right. That's all I'm saying.
I think what you have here is you have an invitation to participate in the process. And I'm not so sure you've given us an answer that you're willing to participate in the process. And that's what Megan has asked you to do.
Mister Chairman, again, I submit to you, we have participated thoroughly in the process.
Have you, so, there's an invite here. You say that if you come to a meeting, you don't want to have all the information just spat back at you, but the invitation says to sit down with those opposed and fully hear and understand their concerns. So are you accepting the invitation from Megan and me for the sewer's feasibility study committee to come and sit down and express your concerns directly in a sit-down roundtable meeting? Are you accepting that invitation?
When, where, who's involved?
No, yes or no? Will you accept an invitation, when we come, if we come to a date that's acceptable to you and your schedule, will you sit down and talk to us so that we can hear your concerns?
I'll sit down and have a conversation with any other citizens on the issue.
Oh, you will? Okay.
I don't, I don't understand. See, see, Selectman just said, when your hired gun, your consultant from CRWA, who has been pushing a yes vote on sewer for years, invited me to coffee, I won't, I won't see eye to eye with him. That's okay. He's a citizen, and he's a consultant, he's been paid. He has initiatives in other towns, for which there's economic interest to his firm. I'm going to disagree with him. We're never going to agree. So I said no to coffee with that gentleman, and you guys take it as, how dare you?
No!
I have a right to an opinion.
Mister Simone, I'm asking you.
It's very well informed.
I think he's eyeing the street.
My question was, are you yes or no, willing to meet? I don't, you refuse to meet with Mister Zimmerman? That's fine. You say an open discussion, and I believe the refusal was, you won't meet with him till after town meeting. That's the story I got. But here's the, here's the point. Will you sit down with the sewer feasibility committee, and in a professional manner, sit and air your concerns, and, and give, let us hear what you're concerned about? It's a simple yes or no. No more attacks on me. Just a yes or no.
That's not the point of what he was presenting.
No, but that's because he, you don't want to know what he presented? Because he refused to answer my question, yes or no, and then he went to a diversion and threw it back on me. I have the floor, Mister McCurdy. Please allow me to ask the question to Mister Simone.
That's the problem.
I am not on trial, or as yours. Selectman DuSet, although, you know, there may be official hearings on these matters. I'm not on trial, and I'm not being deposed. And, and so, Ms. Ford and I will definitely have a conversation. I welcome the work she's done. I will have a conversation with Ms. Ford.
But not with the committee?
I will not have one that's politically charged, or one that's simply meant to serve the interest of a few, at the expense of the many. I'll have a conversation with Ms. Ford, so that she may share with me anything that I've missed.
So you're saying those words are not different than, you're saying we're politically charged, and you're, you're-
You're a politi-, you're a politician. She isn't.
It's a, I'm on the, I'm a volunteer, I'm a volunteer, just like you.
I'd like to also, I'd like to learn from you, too. I'd like to hear your opinion. It's not just that I want to inform you. I want to be informed.
That's great. So you and I should definitely connect and have a conversation about the issue. If I can learn even one thing, I'll come away from it better. So I welcome that. That's it. I don't know what else to say.
So why don't you want to meet with the committee?
Meet with the committee?
Yeah, why don't you want to come to the committee?
By the way, you've charged that I've never been to your committee. I've showed up to, I've showed up three different times.
I think-
Unfortunately, the committee never did.
I think what we have here, we have a request from Megan.
But why, why won't you meet with the committee? You keep avoiding the question. Why won't you, why won't you meet with the committee?
I don't know what that means. You want me to see the committee?
Yes, yes. Come to a committee meeting, have an agenda time, sit around and air your concerns.
What we have, we've heard this.
Wait a minute, but you haven't answered the question.
That's borne out of one comment that is frankly completely off the discussion. What Mister Simone took exception to was the unfortunate wording that was used, and the comment afterwards. That's what we're discussing here. No, it's not, we're not having a debate about the merits of the sewer system. We're having a discussion about how Mister Simone felt he was treated by a remark. This board can address that.
He can.
He can address that. But I don't think the proper way to do it is saying, you're not worth it. And that's, that's what's wrong here. Not whether we're having an open discussion about the sewer, because we can do that.
Can I just simplify something? I mean, I, I don't speak very much on this, but I think the general question is there, we have a committee that's set up, and that committee has given an invitation to Chris and whatever group of people that are doing that, to sit down and-
Teachers and taxpayers.
Well, no matter who it is, whether it's five or 15, 20 people, that have your concerns. Why can't you just come to a meeting and exchange ideas? It's what we always push for.
Work collaboratively.
Is everyone to, you know, to be out there, you know, and be active? And come to that committee meeting and say, these are our concerns? So, so, so they can understand. Not just a one-on-one meeting.
Thank you, Selectman Knox. May I address that?
Sure.
So, and I appreciate the intention, which you raised that. So, again, I have attempted to visit committee meetings. They didn't come. But I have studied their minutes. I have also recognized that since the report was issued, January of 2012, January 4, 2012, Smartsmore, the Smart Sewer Feasibility Study that's been released, that the feasibility had been, you know, that issue was set aside. Since that point in time, they're no longer a feasibility study committee. It's been all about, this is the right thing to do, let's find ways to say yes. I'm not going to agree with that group, no matter how many times we get together. It has been advocating for a yes, but yet won't admit. I mean, it took until last week for Selectman DuSet to even say he was going to vote yes. So nobody was voting yes. But yet, here we are, on the verge of a town committee, a town meeting, where it was simply a decision of yes or no.
Mister Chairman, I, for the record, I want to say that we are a mixed committee. I'm the chair of this committee, and I believe that there are probably at least two members on our committee that may not vote yes towards the sewer, personally. So I don't think that the committee as a whole will be, we're mixed.
Can we have an up and down vote of your committee?
I'd like to, I'd like to clarify a statement there, Mister Simone. Wait a minute, I have the floor, Mister Simone.
You are on the committee. You have an up and down vote?
No, because-
Does the committee want this?
No, because the committee-
Yes or no? Can we have an up or down vote?
All right, guys. No, listen to me. Guys, I am not taking this, Mister Chair.
Guys, I'm done with this.
So your committee, your committee-
We're done. Mister Simone, we're done. Mister Simone, we're done. Got it? We're done. Let's move on.
I definitely got it.
You guys got an invitation to work together, please work together. This is going nowhere. No more hands, guys. I'm done with this. Let's move on.
Thanks for the time.
Got it. All right, let's get on to these articles.
Mister Chair, just one-
No, I'm done with it. Let's move on. I've had enough. Not tonight, guys. You pushed my buttons too far. Sorry.
He made a comment about-
Wait a minute, wait a minute. The chair has spoken. We're done, Alex. Done. We're done. Let's move on. Let's move on. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Megan.
Why my cage always gets rattled? I don't know. Pushes me, pushes my buttons. All right, we've got to get back on track here with these recommendations.
Yeah, the board has inserted articles on the warrant. We, this Friday, we are sending the town meeting report recommendations to the printer.
Excuse me, can we stop the banter again? It's very distracting when we're trying to listen to our town administrator.
There's a motion on the floor. Megan presented it.
She didn't make a motion. She is not a member of the committee. The chair has asked for the gallery to please stay quiet. If you want to continue to speak and violate the open meeting law, then we will ask you to leave.
Mister DuSet, the chair has asked for people to be quiet.
Yeah, let's-
And he's not.
And you are not.
Let's move on. Let's move on, guys. Let's move on. All right, go ahead.
So, so what we're doing now is move, you just received some additional information on one of the articles. The task for tonight is to go through all of the articles, determine which ones you're recommending, which ones are you not recommending, and which ones are you pulling. Based on the recommendation I just heard, you've got a request to pull the sewer article, which is annual town meeting article eight. There are two other articles which, which should be pulled. One is special town meeting article nine, which is a water betterment article on Gilson Road that the water commissioners put in. They now are not proceeding with that project, so, so have asked that it be pulled. Another one to be pulled is, is annual town meeting article 12, Community Preservation Fund Local Appropriation. And it's largely that we're, that the form of the article as submitted does not conform with what the latest rulings are from the Department of Revenue, from the procedures that we have to follow. So we'll come back to a future town meeting with, with the correct first step. And frankly, it will still be several more months before the Department of Revenue issues their information guidelines on, on how to do it. So, those three articles, special nine, annual eight and 12 are proposed to be pulled. The remaining articles are ready to go, with a few exceptions to be discussed. One is that the article on the proposed acquisition of the Church Meadow property is not, it's not ready yet. We're still negotiating. So it would be premature to make any recommendation on that.
That's not a borrowing out of the law, right?
Yes, yes. Well, it's a two-thirds.
It's a, it's a, it's a-
CPC.
Well, it's not a borrowing article.
CPC funding. It requires two-thirds because it's land.
Right.
Because it's an interest in land.
It's not a borrowing article, so that we don't need a debt exclusion or a-
Override.
Override, so it's-
You don't, you don't need, and, and you don't need a debt exclusion, you don't need an override, because the funding source is the Community Preservation Fund. The complication from what I just said about Article 12 is we can't put more cash in the CPA fund. So Bonnie's recommendation is that the only thing that we can do is borrow money, even though it costs more to borrow.
But that end designated $200,000.
Yeah.
Okay. Can that be used, and I know it's too late to insert in any article, but maybe in the fall town meeting appropriated to this acquisition, if in fact it does go through?
Well, not based on the information. Sadly, the answer does not appear to be yes, because the, because it may be, the earliest that we may be able to appropriate money into the fund may not be until the fall of 2014.
Right.
Rather than the fall of 2013.
But still, the $200,000 that we were going to insert into the CPC-
We can put it in eventually.
Well, I'm not even saying that. What I'm saying is, let's use that to pay down the debt upfront.
You could do that.
Right.
You could do that.
That's, that money's going to be sitting out there now.
The money's not accounted for any other way. You could, you could spend it directly. Steve Van Udey made the suggestion to staff that maybe we'd want to put that money into a stabilization fund for community preservation, and then pull it out later.
But is there, is there such a, there is no such account at this?
Well, we'd have to have a town meeting book to establish it. Well, we'd have to have a town meeting book to establish it.
And it's too late for this one, too. So it's a discussion. I guess my point is I don't want to, I don't want to see that money, you know, go undesignated. I know it won't go undesignated, but it should go, if this acquisition does go through, no matter what, that $200,000 should go towards the acquisition.
We can do that. Yes, that would be possible to do.
And we'd have to do that in the fall town meeting because we can't take...
Before the tax rate is set because it would...
Because the article, yeah, was just specifically for the preservation.
Yes, you can do that. We won't have a, we don't have a recommendation tonight, though, on that, on the acquisition article. We probably will be working right up till town meeting on, you know, are we buying the whole thing? Are we buying an interest in the real estate? We're still negotiating with the seller. So that's one article where there's no action ready yet. The zoning articles that are in the warrant, there are four of them in the warrant, two inserted by the planning board, two by the voter petition. Only one of them, as of tonight, has had its hearing before the planning board, the open space development one, which is article 21, 20, which is, yeah, article 20. Planning board had its public hearing on that article on the 28th of February. They voted to recommend. And so that's, and so you do have that report.
They didn't bring up the moratorium. I thought they did at that meeting.
Well, no, that the moratorium hearing is scheduled for April 11th. So that will be heard this Thursday night. And if they vote, I'm sorry, it's not scheduled until the 25th.
I thought it was this Thursday.
Well, it was initially, and then the ad didn't get in the paper.
Oh.
So...
So no action can be taken on that tonight?
There will be no action. Yeah, so on 21, 22, and 23, the hearings have not been held yet and will not be held by the time this document goes to press.
I'm sorry, for which one I was reading.
21, 22, and 23.
Okay.
Yeah, 21, 22, 23. 21, the medical marijuana moratorium does have a hearing scheduled, and it is on April 25th, so that will be in time for town meeting. The other two articles, the planning board has not scheduled a hearing yet. And I have to say it would be, and unless they do, it's just a matter of law, unless they do hold their hearing prior to town meeting and issue a recommendation to town meeting, then that unless they do both of those things, town meeting cannot vote on those two petitioned articles, even if the sponsor doesn't, you know, doesn't pull them from the warrant. They're on the warrant, but they cannot be lawfully voted on unless the planning board holds their hearings.
Well, that's not going to happen.
And that, you know, and it doesn't look, and the game plan, frankly, that was discussed at the joint meeting on the 28th of March was that, was the commitment to come up with a proposal by August 1st that addresses the issues that are raised in those two petitions.
That would be 6C on the agenda tonight.
Right. So you've got, you've got those three zoning articles plus the land acquisition article that we're not ready to go on. The others are, the others are ready.
All right, so should we go with a motion to, on the ones that are being pulled first?
Yeah, if you want to pull special article nine, annual town meeting articles eight and 12.
12. So I'll make the motion to pull from the May 6, 2013 special town meeting, article number nine, water betterment on Gilson Road. I'd also include in that motion to pull on the annual town meeting a article eight, borrowing for a little bit government sewer, smart sewer preliminary design. Also included is article 12, Community Preservation Fund Local Appropriation. And that's it.
That's it. Second. Move in second. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so then the rest of these we'll just go through and...
Yeah, I should, I should mention as well that...
We'll assign them, and then we'll also take a vote to give our blessing, I guess, if that were in favor.
Yeah, I should mention as well, in the special town meeting warrant, there were two other articles that are not ready to go yet, and one is unpaid bills because we don't have any.
Those are previous years?
Yeah.
Which one is that?
Yeah, article one.
Oh.
And article four, collective bargaining agreement. We haven't reached one with the last union, and so we're not ready on that one either.
So why does that say service?
Yeah.
Does that, does he have one, or you have collective bargaining?
No, I saw some typos of it.
Okay, so special town meeting, article six and article four.
Yeah, my name should be next to...
Four.
Four, yeah. I didn't...
So no action on both of those, six and four?
We're not going to keep one. We should keep at least one on there.
No, no. What, article...
Six.
Yeah, article six should read Establish Stabilization Fund.
Oh.
That's yet another problem. Just a human error.
What is it again? Article six, established?
Article six is Establish Stabilization Fund.
Isn't that a capital stabilization?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the capital stabilization. And then article seven funds the capital stabilization. When I was preparing this grid here, I was having a tasting from last year's grid.
So you're recommending pulling off the collective bargaining?
No. No, I'm saying, take no, take no recommendation tonight on special one and four, and you pulled nine.
And no action on...
And the remaining articles, if you choose, you could...
15, 21 through 23?
Yeah.
No action on those as well?
Right. And the remaining articles in the warrant, if you choose, you could vote to recommend as presented.
Why don't we look at the special first? All right, so you want to do assignment first?
Yeah, why don't we do, I'll take two. I'll take three. I'm going to take four if it comes to fruition.
Okay.
Take one.
Oh, wow, all right.
You're taking one?
And I'll take five.
Joe took one.
Took one for the team.
What do you got? I don't know. He might be grandstanding on that one.
Then I'll take the next four.
So you got one, so you got two, three, four, and five?
Yeah.
What, you take two through five?
Yeah, you really stepped up.
Actually, I'll do, so...
You want to do six and seven while you're on it?
The two stabilization funds, okay.
Jim Carney.
The Jim?
I'll take eight. How's that sound? Good move.
Eight, okay.
Step up for eight.
All right, so can we make our recommendations? Any discussion on these?
No, I think...
No, I think I'm behind him. I...
I'm good with the law.
Any discussion?
No, no, no.
And move that the board, are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, you can move on the special.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to adopt the following recommendations on articles in the May 6, 2013 special town meeting in direct preparation for motions to be moved and seconded by the board of selectmen for articles inserted by said board, subject to approval of town council. Support articles in the special town meeting, two, article two, 2013 line transfers, article three, 2013 Minuteman Vocational Bill, article four, collective, oh, sorry, skip. Article five, 2013 capital items from available funds for the ambulance. Article six, establish a capital stabilization fund. Article seven, fund the capital stabilization fund. And article eight, security upgrade for a little bit of public schools.
Second.
Move in second. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, let's move on to the annual.
I'll take all the ones with the asterisks.
All of the consented gentlemen.
Consent agenda.
All right. I'll take the police ones.
So why don't we just go down?
Yeah, let's start town offices.
That was consent, so that just goes through Tim, right? Does he, do we even have to take those?
We should assign somebody.
I'll just take the assignment.
Yeah, just take...
Annual report. Alex, you haven't got none. Come on, step up here.
Everyone's jumping up thinking they're going to pile them on me.
That's a tough one.
You want it?
No, yes.
I was going to say something.
All right, take it.
All right, you got the annual report.
All right, I'll take the borrowing authorization.
Operating budget.
I'll take that.
Water enterprise fund operating budget.
That wouldn't be us anyway.
Anybody want it?
Well, if we have to assign somebody, yeah.
I'll take, I'll take water.
I take water ones, yeah.
Stabilization fund is consent. 14 capital items available funds.
I'll take the police ones.
Okay, so you're going to take...
That's not just one article? You want to just...
It's the four items.
It's the four items, so...
One, it's A, it's, I mean, numeral one, A through D.
Yep. Okay, to the fire department?
I'll take the fire department. Those two articles. I'm doing the ambulance.
I'll take highway. Okay. Joe is going to take the highway.
Well, these ones, let's look back.
Was it Alex saying one of them?
I'll take...
I'll take anything you want.
Speak up.
I don't want to, you know, speak up.
Highway, Joe, you go highway?
I got highway. There's a rule, if you just stay quiet a second, somebody else volunteers first, then...
I'll take the schools. I'll take the schools.
Why do you take things like that when we're not going to speak on them anyway?
Exactly.
So that's why you got them? I mean, I didn't mean to take it so that you have, you have school?
Yeah, I'll take the schools.
The role that we play in this is vastly changed since the, you know, the information package that goes out to vote it because we don't really, you know, we're not significant players in the presentation.
No, we're just, if we need to stand up and say something, we do it. Facilities and infrastructure?
I'll go. I got nothing.
Well, I'll take E for the fire station with the theme.
You're going to take E. Ted, you want the rest?
Sure.
All right.
All right, again, McCurdy.
I'll take A, B, C, and D. I don't care.
All right, so on other?
For other.
Other, I'll take other.
Alex has got other. Alex is the other guy. All right, the trust school grant funds for Kimball?
That's the consent.
No, that's me. Same with 2014 evolving. Personal bylaw amendments, that's usually you, Alex, right?
That's his board, right?
And next page, CPC, I usually jump.
Well, that's pulled, right?
Yeah, 12 is pulled, but...
No, 13 is... CPC budget.
I'll take the budget.
The former chairman.
All right, so 12, okay. Home rule petition, conservation, recreation, land exchange?
No, I'll take it. I'll take it. Well, I mean, just, I gotta get up on it.
No action on 15, 16 is a consent. I'll stick with the consent. I'll take 18 because I've been involved with that. 19, tax title about our sales lot program.
I'll take that one.
I can't even get my vote on that. Yeah, no, I can't even get it.
I like that one.
I do, yeah.
Zoning?
Want it, Ted? Ted?
Okay, all right.
Ted wants it, go ahead.
I mean, who's got it here? I got it.
Ted is tax.
Ted's our tax guy. Zoning bylaw amendment, open space development.
That I would like to have a discussion about.
Yeah, we do have to have a discussion, and I probably am not the best person to talk about that one.
Yeah, yeah, before we recommend anything.
Let's say no action on it, then?
No, we can make action on it. Just take it separately.
Well, don't, do we want to assign it?
Assign it.
I'm opposed to what's on it.
Yeah, I'm opposed to, so I can't take it. I shouldn't take it.
Since I was the former planning board guy, I'll take it. Okay, no action on 1, 21, 22, and 23. 24, wetlands protection bylaw amendment.
I'll go.
Okay, Ted.
Oh.
Want it?
No, you don't want it.
You're against it.
I can still read it now.
So when Alex had nothing on this page, this last page, just to make, you know, you're aware of that.
25, gentlemen?
25, I'll do.
Attaboy, Joe.
I don't know, anybody making my points more clear than yours.
I'll take 26, 27. Drainage easement on Harvard Road. Man, Alex, that's in your backyard.
I'll take it. He can't, he doesn't want it, right?
Conflict of interest.
Well, he's been staying away from it. I don't believe it's a conflict of interest, but he's been playing it safe and staying away from it, so I'm assuming he wants to stay away from it now, right?
Okay, all right, fair. Just jump in here, guys.
I do.
Ted, 29.
Wait a minute. No, because I'm being respectful. You have stayed away from everything on Harvard Road, and so I was taking that because I assumed you would stay away from it again.
That's correct.
And I didn't criticize you at all.
I don't think you should make assumptions about me.
I'm sorry.
I think I should say, no, I don't want it.
We haven't been talking at all.
I gave you the option.
We haven't been saying it first.
What's going on here?
You're no...
Does he make a rocket scientist to figure any of this out?
No, you're making mountains on mobiles, Alex.
All right, let's go, guys.
Alex, you're really making a mountain on mobiles. I was trying to be totally respectful, and I said to you, unless you want to take it, or I was assuming that you didn't want it.
Can we just get through these?
Five, you'll have to continue.
Five. 29, who wants it?
I'll take it. I got the other reason.
Community septic system repair loan program.
That's something for Board of Health alone.
Yeah.
Okay, Ted, you're loading up. Rescind unused borrowing authorizations, I'll take. Okay, very good. Sounds like we're well-balanced in representing our rights. All right, I need a motion to, to go through this.
All right, so article, the annual town meeting, if there's any discussion through article 11, any issues or any discussion through article 11, I'll make a motion for those. If the board has any issues or any particular interest in commenting on them?
No, no.
Yeah, you pulled, you pulled eight, but all except...
Right, all except eight. Right, I have. So we'll move that the board of selectmen vote to adopt the following recommendations on articles in the May 6 annual town meeting in direct preparation of motions to be moved and seconded by the board of selectmen for articles inserted by said board, subject to approval as to form by town council. Support articles. Annual town meeting articles, town one, number one, town offices, number two, annual report, number three, borrowing authorization, number four, 2014 operating budget, number five, 2014 water enterprise fund operating budget, number six, stabilization fund, number seven, capital items from available funds. To include, police department, cruisers, vehicle maintenance, vehicle reimbursement, refurbishment, I'm sorry, portable, police portable radios. Number two, fire department, fire major equipment repair, UHF radio system upgrade. Number three, highway department, highway major equipment repair, highway loader refurbishment, highway dump truck, dump pickup truck, asphalt hot box trailer. Number four, schools, school iPad in carts, shake-a-lane univents, high school Wi-Fi upgrades, school technology, shake-a-lane playground and fencing, shake-a-lane bathroom door dividers, technology computer replacements, general building maintenance. Number five, facility and infrastructure, town hall HVAC, town building major equipment repairs and maintenance, cemetery building repairs, salt shed building repairs, fire station modular building, sidewalk repairs. Number six, other, cemetery paving, lawn laid security, recreation vehicle lease, library furniture. Number eight is gone. Number nine, under the special town, these are all special town meetings, right?
No, annual.
Annuals?
Yeah.
All right, annual, number nine, the MH Kimball Trust School Grant Funds. Number 10, fiscal 2014 revolving funds, number 11, personal bylaw amendments.
Second.
Move in second. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, right.
Let's see here. Mr. Del Puri, if you had a question, let me try to get you in here before we get into the next section.
Basically, the question was, are the selectmen going to take a position on the seven easement lots regarding Omni? Or are you folks going to leave that one just there?
We're not, yeah, we're, we, yeah, we're not there yet.
All right, so Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Moving on, the next group of articles down to article number 20, zoning bylaw, I'd like to have a discussion about, but 13 through 19, any issues?
Let's see here. We're not taking an action, any action on 15.
Number 12, no one?
Gone, but number 15, we're not taking action on.
Right.
We're not going to take any action on number 21 either. That's all right. Right, we're not taking any action on 21, 22.
So 12 is gone and no action on 15. That gets us to 20.
Correct, gets us to 20. So you want to include 20 or not?
No.
Okay. Ready for motion? Well, wait a minute. Let's go and see if we can clean everything else out underneath it. Is there anything else that you guys want to discuss? Yeah, well, okay, if we look at, we're not taking any action on 21, 22, and 23. 24, 25, 26, 27, and 29 looks like you need to have a little discussion about the Griss Mill piece. Any other ones there? Community septic repair, used borrowing authorizations, any of that stuff? So why don't we take everything but 20 and 29? Everybody's okay with that? Everybody okay with that?
Where we going? Are we stopping at? Are we doing 24?
I'd like to talk about 30 just a little bit.
30, okay. All right, and what about 24?
24?
Talk about 24 as well?
Well, I just don't know where we were at with that because we had talked about they were going to have rules and regulations, or they weren't going to have them.
Well, it's the compromise that you agreed to with, for the wetlands protection, 2014.
Okay, so they followed up with our...
But I thought they changed.
The language that was inserted when the two boards met jointly was to make their adoption of regulations subject to the selectmen's approval. And that's the way the article reads, and that was the agreement that you two were...
Do we want to discuss that one, too?
Did you see the 171?
It's what we asked for. That's what we discussed.
With the approval of the board of selectmen. Okay, I didn't see it in there. Okay, so it's right up front. It's right up front of the article.
It's right.
Yeah, you got to go to the article.
Yeah, yeah. No, I was looking at the...
It just says 1717.
1717, I was looking at a different section. Okay.
So I think what I'm hearing is we're good with everything except for 20, 29, 30. We're not taking any action on 15, 21, 22, and 23, and 12 has been pulled. So I think everything else is good, right?
No, good.
Ready? You guys good down there?
Yep.
Okay.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to adopt the following recommendations on articles in the May sixth, twenty thirteen annual town meetings in direct of preparation of motions to be moved and seconded by the board of selectmen for articles inserted by said board subject to the approval as to form by town council. Support articles. Uh, thirteen, twenty fourteen community preservation budget, I'm sorry, thirteen, that was, thirteen, twenty fourteen community preservation budget. Article fourteen, home rule petition, conservation, recreation, land exchange. Article sixteen, compensating balance agreement. Article seventeen, twenty fourteen, uh, personal exemption amounts. Article eighteen, uh, payment in lieu of taxes, solar. Article nineteen, tax title of butter lot sales program.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Okay, twenty-four. Uh, town, um, article twenty-four, town bylaw amendment, wetlands protection. Uh, twenty-five, town bylaw amendment, director of elder and human services, twenty-six, senior work program. Twenty-seven, use of chapter ninety mass dot funds. Twenty-eight is a drainage easement on Harvard Road, twenty-nine is a skip, thirty is.
We'll skip them, not one two.
Thirty is a skip, and thirty-one, rescind unused loan authorizations.
Okay, move in second. Hold on a favor.
Hi.
Opposed? Alright, we're good with those. Okay, so let's go back and talk about twenty. Which is zoning bylaw amendment, open space development.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I do not support this. I think it's something that actually could get shot down once we, because this is something that has to be, does this have to be, uh, approved by the Attorney General? I, I, yeah, I feel it could be, uh, threatened to be shot down. It, uh, puts undue, uh, requirements on a developer, uh, by forcing them, if they're going to do a conservation, uh, restriction, that they have to show that they can get, they can perk all their lots for a four-bedroom residential dwelling. So this is kind of, um, taking Title V and bringing it into open space development and planning board regulations. I think it does a lot to discourage open space development and when we could have a nice open space development, um, it could, uh, it could quash that. And, uh, this is basically a regulation the Board of Health had, and we were told for, uh, several years that, uh, it was dangerous and we could have been sued for it. Um, so we eventually got rid of it and brought in some different, uh, requirements. So, I don't support this because I think it, uh, oversteps our bounds and I don't think it'll hold up with the Attorney General.
I would argue a little bit differently than that in that, um, it's not meant to be perks, um, are not meant to be, um, determining if there'll be a septic system or not, but helping a planning board determine, um, what lots, uh, what a typical lot would be, uh, how many lots they would be able to get in a particular parcel of land. So this is simply a measuring tool for how they determine, when they look at a piece of property, um, how many, uh, standard lots would customarily be allowed. That helps them in their decision-making process, uh, when looking, um, at the open space or preservation of open space aspect of it. So, I don't see it as overstepping bounds whatsoever. I think there is a big source of misunderstanding because, um, they're, they're not dictating septic systems. The construction septic system, the approval of septic system, or anything the like. Um, they're using, uh, the septic systems as a way to create lot footprints as to what a, a standard development might look like. So I think that's a good planning tool, um, because we have had the situation thrown at us where, um, where there is no determination the planning board has, um, and frankly, if we go simply by what the, what the A bridge of zoning is, it's going to cause a lot more dense, uh, development and a lot less open space. And, um, so I think it's a good tool. I think, from what I heard of the planning board here, um, they're, they're completely thinking, that this is simply a template tool. And, um, I agree.
I, I hate to step on the planning board's toes on any issue that deals with them directly. I think I don't understand where they're coming from or what their objective is. The way this is written, in my opinion, it puts more restrictions on a builder than a builder would have on a conventional system. So what we're going to end up doing, if, if I'm a developer, there's more restrictions on this to get my open space than there is in the conventional. So if I'm going to save money, I'm going to go, instead of saving open space, I'm now going to go to a conventional thing and do every single lot and not have any open space because there's more restrictions there on this than there is on, on the conventional. So, even though the intent is there, I think it's not worded strongly enough. I don't think it's going to get where they want to go. Maybe I'm reading, I mean, it, it talks about four-bedroom systems. I don't think there's any restrictions on any, on any other conventional system, conventional plans, as I say, oh yeah, you have to have four-bedroom houses, you could have a three-bedroom house, or two-bedroom, and so forth.
So.
So I, I, I think you're throwing more, a builder's going to take a look at that and say, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just do the conventional thing and we're not going to have any open space. Now, I might be reading it wrong.
Well, I was just going to ask you, you interpret it as the standard is different for open space versus, um, for standard development?
It absolutely is.
Um, because I thought it was, it was the standard development when they laid it out, the way I understood.
Conventional.
And if, if you laid out the conventional, you'd have to have septic systems laid out for each one.
Right.
And that that standard simply transposes over to the open space so that the opens, so they can make better determination on, on the open space side. But do you see that the regulation is actually more than what's on the conventional side?
Right, because it, it actually mentions right here that you have to demonstrate that you had kind of a, you know, protest for a four-bedroom house. It doesn't say that in the other place. So, say I'm working in the area that I know probably won't support four-bedroom houses, might support only three-bedroom houses. I'm going to go conventional.
Can I just make a quick clarification?
This is my reading, not an attorney on.
As far as minimum size, Title V says minimum design has to be three bedrooms for a new construction. So, that's another way they're stepping over the boundary. They're saying four bedrooms. So, the board, the Board of Health regulation, well, it's my personal opinion, don't mind.
So, I'll, I'll toe my two cents in here. Um, I, I agree with Mr. Knox in regards to, um, you know, open space is just that, you know. If we want open space, we need to give something, okay? And that's the shorter drive to more dense, um, uh, building for subdivisions and such. So, why, why would a, um, developer come and say, I want to do open space if it's going to cost more money than a conventional because I have to do four-bedroom septic systems? Well, you know that.
That's one way.
I'm not, I'm not an expert at this by any means, but that's my interpretation of this article, you know? Being too restrictive, making it more restrictive than saying, hey, we want open space. Come to us and we'll give you this, this, and this.
I think the devil's in the details here, you know, having served on a planning board for six years. Open space concept is good, but I think the intent behind the open space, uh, development plan was to get some quality land in return for giving development, um, a break, if you will, to, you know, have a dense development where the land that you receive for the town is something good that they can use.
But see, that's where the ability of, this is a special permit, that's where the ability of the planning board can say, you know what, we're not going to take that. We're going to say no and deny you the open space plan.
And that's exactly what they did on C forty-eight, over and off.
So that's what they have the ability to do. So, to, to, to step from that into the realm of septic systems, you know, the open space is special permit.
But I think that's one of the biggest misunderstandings is, is that this isn't telling them what they have to have for a septic system and it.
It certainly is.
No, what it's doing, here's what it's doing.
It's simply saying, it's a, it's a methodology for saying, for calculating how many lots would, could be used on the property. And, and the reason it's there is because now we know that we have shared septic systems and a developer could walk in and say, well, we got, you know, we got twenty acres here and I'm going to put up twenty-five houses. And, and the reason is, I'm going to have a shared septic system. So I think what they're trying to do is say, well, how do we prevent that from happening and have some sort of measure? This is nothing to do with septic systems. It's, it's just a methodology for, and maybe they could find a better methodology, but it's a methodology for, for being able to make the comparisons between a, a standard or conventional plan and an open space plan. So then they can decide, when they get to the special permit, how much open space, um, is appropriate for this plan? Because they have, they now know, well, this twenty-acre partial customarily, under, um, typical situations, can support fifteen lots. And, okay, so now from there you can decide what is open, what is an open space advantage for the town.
I have a question for Alex. I have a question. I would like you to clarify something. You said that, paraphrasing, something to the effect that they, this, if someone wants to come in, instead of putting septic systems, they can put in a treatment plant, I believe, and you said, and this is to prevent that?
No, that's not.
What did you say? Okay, you said something, you said, you said prevent that. I want to know what that is. That's what I want to ask him for clarification on.
Up until now, we've had a system that basically said, that gave them a tool for saying, based on the fact that every home was going to have a standard septic system. Okay, that's how they did their comparisons, where the open space advantage is, or is not. When they, when the developer has to permit, uh, put in two separate plans, one for conventional, one for open space. What the advent of, of shared septic system means is that all that goes away because now greater density is possible because of the, because of the shared septic system. And they need a tool to measure what, what that relationship is. So I'm not saying, I'm not talking about against that kind of septic system. I'm saying that what they have now is a change in the, in the rules that they're going to face. They need to update their regulations to react accordingly.
I'm still not following. You said something about they're trying to prevent that. I don't want to know what that is. No, I want to know, because I, I tried putting words in my, I, I got accused of putting words in my mouth, so I'm listening to that. So what, the planning board is trying, trying to prevent that. What is, can you define that for me?
The loss of a standard which they have been using to determine, um, the viability of a conventional versus an open space plan.
I don't think they're losing a standard. I think they're adding to the standard.
That's why they changed the bylaw.
The, the ground rules have changed because now shared septic systems means that the density of development can change to what they have customarily been planning to.
But that's been, shared septic has been around a long time before Omni.
But it hasn't been an issue here. I mean, it wasn't until your board took away the, the moratorium or whatever, I don't know what it was, that it, that it even became a consideration because everybody said, oh, they got that regulation, we're not going to do it.
We revised the moratorium, we revised the regulation. Because the moratorium said that this should only be good for, this is only good for one year until the Board of Health develops standards for treatment plans. So what happened is, it kept getting, it kept getting renewed and renewed and renewed, and it wasn't supposed to. That was, from what I understood, that was an illegal action. So what we did is, we did what was actually said in the, in the moratorium, is that we developed standards.
But that's fine.
So, I'm saying, and one, yeah, I just didn't want to be painted picture.
What I'm applauding is their goal, to have a unit of mission for establishing the value of a conventional plan versus an open space plan that is applicable to today's building environment.
What is different, why is today's building environment different? Because they can do shared septic systems?
Because now shared septic systems are going to become more and more prevalent.
But how does that impact the planning of the septic?
See, the planning board has a tool, that's what I feel. They, and it's all, it's set out so that if you can fit X number of lots according to zoning, you get X plus Y to open space. They have a tool. This is designed.
Based on. It's based on a standard septic system.
No, it's not. No, it's not. It's based on zoning. It's only zoning. See, that's where the confusion is.
It's one acre zone.
Uh, you can take a fifty-acre piece of land and you can do a subdivision plan and, and approval, not required by the planning board.
For fifty, for fifty house lots.
Fifty, fifty lots without doing anything on septic. You know what else you can do? You can take that and then you can redesign it without any question and redo it with forty-eight without any septic. You, all A and R requires is zoning, it has nothing to do with septic. So this is pulling in something that's out of their purview to, to put a further restriction on the calculation.
On an open space.
On an open space.
Trying to encourage.
Right.
I'm going to go to the eye, I got a bunch of hands up here. Name, name and address for the room.
Bartlet Harvey on the No Road. Um, I'm going to take a chance and put words in Alex's mouth. I think, um, what, what the planning board is getting at is, if you go to his example of a twenty-acre lot and half of it is ledge or swamp and it's unbuiltable by the current rules. With shared septic systems, the developer can go in and say, I have twenty acres, I'm allowed to build twenty lots or twenty houses. Therefore, I can build twenty half-acre lots on the ten acres that's buildable. And the planning board is trying to not have that kind of density. So they're saying, under the old rules on that twenty acres, only half of it was buildable, you could only get ten houses on there. So they're limiting the developer to those ten houses configured in some way.
Well, it's a very clear, that's, that's a very clear of my understanding of it too. I just feel it's good. When you start throwing in there four bedroom.
That's, that's for the open space.
Yeah.
They, they still have the ability to take twenty lots and put in a, a shared septic system based on.
No.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
No, that, what, what this rule is getting at.
No, no, I'm not talking about this rule. I'm saying, you made, you made, you made a comment saying, they have twenty lots, they want to put twenty lots. Right, they have twenty acres of land, twenty lots. And you said that they can put twenty buildings on half-acre lots based on the.
On, on the old system.
Based on, based on the open space.
Open space plan.
So, so, but, but to say that, um, that's, the, the, the planning board can still deny that, saying it's too dense because it's a special permit. So, if they put in a shared septic system, they can still do their twenty lots.
They can still build their houses on ledge with a shared septic system. And they, and in that case, they're going to destroy a whole lot more land and trees.
Right.
Am I right?
No.
Okay, what went wrong?
I mean, what, what, what I'm trying to say is that, under the old system, if half of that twenty acres is buildable and the other half is swamp, you can put ten houses there because half of it's unbuiltable in the old system.
Okay, you changed the swamp down, but you said ledger. You can't build a swamp, but you can build a ledge.
Okay, but I'm just, if, if it's unbuiltable, I, I mean, because in the old system, you couldn't build on ledge because you couldn't put a septic system in. But if you're allowed by the old rules to put ten houses in there on twenty acres, then this new rule would allow you to put in a shared system, but limit the number to, to, to the ten units. That's my understanding of it.
Instead of twenty. Yeah, instead of twenty.
Instead of the twenty, because with shared systems, twenty acres, somebody's going to think they can put in twenty units.
Well, I think, I think, Sluggman Carr makes a very good point where this is still a special permit, so they still have control. They're going to, they're going to say, look, don't, this is swamp, this isn't hikeable, this isn't, you can't build fields, so they still have it. So I think the protections are there.
But I, but I think, well, the, the, I think his point is very valid. He actually said it better than I did because I think that's exactly where we're going here. The rule, the, the, what, the advent of, of what we're pretty much assured is going to be the advent of shared septic system needs to have an adjustment, um, because now what he's, what, how he's presenting it is, is, is how we do it, and that's going to change. And so, so we end up with tremendously tight density. We potentially could end up with tremendously tight density. And we need a way to say, well, you know, if the, if the idea is to preserve open space and we're, and, and your, whatever their formula is, I don't know what their formula is for saying, well, if you move so much here and give us so much, you can have an open space plan. That's now changed so that, that, that smaller parcels of land, smaller pieces of open space will become available because of the density.
But you need to understand, open space by law, by definition, means more dense.
But more open space.
But more open space. So, when I hear you talk about it's going to be more dense, of course it's going to be more dense because that's what the open space law, by law is for. It's not to take twenty acres and build twenty houses. So when you condense that into open space to keep some open, it's going to be more dense construction. And that's what the open space by law does. It makes it a subdivision more dense. That's what it does. So we can have more open space. All we're saying is, when you have a, a developer come in and say, okay, I got twenty lots. I'm not going to do open space because I'm not even going to ask for. lots. I'm not going to do open space, because I'm not even going to ask for a special permit, because I have a right for 20 houses. If I want to give open space to the town, in, in, in approach, what do I get back as a developer?" What you're saying is, what this by law is saying is, "No, hold on. Go perk everything for a four-bedroom house, and then let's talk about a special permit, that we may say no anyways."
Well, I, I think that the key point here is, the open space is the quality of the open space. You know, if you're getting, if you're, if you're getting swamp, and you don't need to perk swamp, is, is that really, is that really good open space?
Then you say no.
That's a special permit, and that's...
And that's a special permit.
And do what you did on me.
You've got a special permit, has to have some, you know, you have to be able to stand behind your decision, or somebody will appeal it, and it'll get overturned. So it can't be, "I don't like this." That's not a...
That's what they just did on me. They said, "I don't like this, I don't like this open space that you're giving me. Give me a hundred thousand dollars."
They gave the open space.
Right, they gave me the open space. I don't, I don't, I don't like the quality of the open space, so I want a hundred thousand dollars so I can build soccer fields. That's what the, that was a condition of the special permit. So therefore, the protection about the qua, everything you're talking about, as far as protecting the quality of open space, it's in there in the special permit. Case in point, and it worked.
Does, uh, so you got, I'll take the, I'm going to be a reply to something.
Jared Elpeori again. The real thing is, historically, septic systems have been used as a tool to limit development. The idea is, okay, in order to get a subdivision approved, you need to show you can have a viable septic system on every single lot. This whole issue of package systems, a game changer. That no longer holds. The whole reason for originally requiring viable septic systems on individual lots in open space, is to cover the case that Mr. Harvey over here mentioned, which is, "Oh gee, I've got a lot that's got 15 acres of ledge and five acres of good perking soils, and well, you know, it's 20 acres worth, I get my 20 houses." With a packaged plant, now you can do that. So, I think what you need is, the zoning has to be such, as you folks have brought up, that you can't be more restrictive, saying you get fewer lots in an open space development. You have to get at least as many in an open space as you do on a conventional, otherwise nobody's going to build it. Plus, I believe there was something, open, I mean, anti-snob zoning years ago, that you cannot specify the size of the square footage of a house. So as you point out, requiring that you have to perk for a four-bedroom system, could cause legal problems, plus requiring you have to perk the whole site, even though that's not a requirement with a packaged plant, yeah, I think you should, I think this thing's got enough issues that maybe you should kick it back to the planning board, with the feeling that, hey, with packaged plants, it's a game changer. You can't use septic as a backdoor means of limiting development. And also, I believe under open space right now, the requirement is, wetlands be backed out.
Oh, is it? Okay.
I think so.
Yeah, it would make sense, but I haven't read it yet.
That would make sense. We're calling, you've been pushing my buttons tonight, so be good.
Appreciate that very much. Yeah, I, see, I, I don't think it's a referendum on whether or not conventional is preferred over open space. That's not what this article does. Nor is it one about the advent and virtues of shared septic, though we know new soaring approaches will lead to scale. But that's not what this is either. The equation set forth in the old and the proposed new is bifurcated. It's A and B. Unfortunately, everyone rushes to B. What's the give and take? If it's open space, what do they get? That has to be predicated on a baseline. That baseline and the equations around it are no longer valid. And this article serves to create a new baseline, so that we can have an informed, intelligent conversation with developers about that give and take, so that it'd be fair. And I, and I would advise you that, on an issue this important to so many townspeople, please, just let the townspeople vote on this. And/or invite maybe, invite, invite planning board member Don MacGyver before you, before you make this decision.
Mr. York, I think you're confused. This is on the article. We're voting whether or not we support it. It's already going to town meeting.
I understand that, but whether or not I...
No, you don't understand, because you just said it what, please let it on there.
I misspoke. Thank you for the courtesy, selecting yourself. But I do want to raise something he just said. I did not realize that the hundred thousand dollar gift that many people in this town feel was a bribe, that was made by Omni with respect to the open space you're talking about, had already been earmarked for soccer fields. A lot of people had hoped it would be earmarked to protect some of our agricultural treasures, or maybe for the purpose of community farming, or otherwise.
It has, but doesn't mean for any...
I may have, yeah, yeah.
Selecting is what I just said, it's soccer fields.
That's what some people draw on conversations. I shouldn't have committed that, that's what it's definitely going to be used for.
We've both misspoken then.
Yeah, and I, yeah, so, yeah.
What is the process by which we'll decide how that hundred thousand dollars we spent to protect, to protect our...
Tell me, that it gets reserved for the general purpose set forth in the planning board decision, which I think's at recreation. And so, this specific purpose...
The residents would be very uncomfortable, myself included, if we ever thought that behind the scenes, there was a decision, a, a kind of quid pro quo, quite kind of thing, where...
Back to what I'm getting at.
You have to have a planning board, communities, all the boards, not a discussion for you.
That was, that was kind of by the planning board, not by us.
Are you, yeah, all right.
I just, I'm asking for an education. How will that decision be made before it gets to town meeting? There has to be, an article has to get formed. A recommendation has to be made. Where does that come from?
There's an article right here.
Probably the planning board.
You're talking about the hundred thousand dollars?
How that could spend.
When the time, when the time comes, well, the Board of Selectmen inserts articles on the warrant. No, no one else has standing, so it'll, it'll come through here for business.
It's not for discussion tonight. Come back to it in a later meeting.
If I can...
Go ahead.
Let me cut you off.
No, thank you.
Going back to the, the way it's, it's worded right now, concerns I have again, you had mentioned with the legality part at the very beginning. And Jerry brought up a point between, between three-bedroom and four-bedroom units. You have a legality problem there. When it was mentioned, another legality problem that could arise is that during the planning board meeting, it was mentioned that one of the towns had reinforced it. There was court cases that supported it. But what it didn't support was, it was supporting conventional septic systems, and would never have, they had a court case that dealt with having a shared system. So, that, that has never gone to court. So that's, there's, there's two legality problems that might lead here. And then, once again, as a developer might say, "I want to avoid this, so I'm going to go conventional." So, it's, my opinion is that we don't take action on this. Let it, let it be resolved at, at, at town meeting, because I don't think we're going to get a consensus either one way or the other.
Well, you know what? I think, you know, the board should take a stand. You know, I think there's been enough discussion here to, to, to take a stand as far as whether or not we support the article.
I, I understand that, and I would like, I would like my position heard on this in the board, but, you know, then I'm talking, I'm looking forward here. There's another one where I want to let it, just let the townspeople, I mean, why do we, this is, can you just inform me, why do we take a stand? I mean, why, are we, are we required to make a recommendation? And, you know, what's the theory behind it?
You're, you're the chief executive, chief policymakers, and that, um, some voters look to you for guidance.
Okay, so, and we've always, I mean, it's...
But it's, it's not, it's practice, it's practice, not legal. It's a, it's a practice, it's not a legal requirement.
Three stances here, either for, against it, or abstain.
No, no. Well, I mean, it's, you know, it, and, and I think the way the moderator has operated sometimes, and, and he's doing his job, that will be in the middle of a big debate, and he'll be looking for guidance, and he'll look down either at the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen, and see if you have an opinion. And you, you want to discuss and be ready, maybe you will, maybe you won't, so...
You know, I, I think, I think the intent's good here, but I think Mr. Delpeori said it pretty well with the three bedrooms versus the four bedrooms. You know, if we design at a minimum standard through Board of Health to a three bedroom, at the very least, this should say three bedrooms, not four. And we also need to, has this been vetted through town council to make sure there aren't any issues with it?
Yeah, and, and a town council raised the issue that Joe, that Joe mentioned, which was that there was case law on the matter of requiring that all the lots be perked in the subdivision where the, where, where needed an onsite system on each lot in order... And it did not address the issue of what about a wastewater treatment facility that was being shared. And, and it, there's, there's no case law out there that says, can you force the, you know, what about in the case where, doesn't matter, it doesn't matter to the developer whether the lot's perked or not, because he's not going to put a septic system on, he's going to put a wastewater treatment facility, can you still require him to do perks that he doesn't need in order to get his wastewater treatment facility approval? And that, you know, there's no case law on that. There's no decision on that, so...
All right, so what do you guys think?
I think based on what Keith said, and following up with, again, I, I don't like this that much, but just because we've already done it, we should keep doing it. But I think if that's, if we, we just made recommendations on, you know, what, 25 of these things, we should, we should keep true to that.
Do we want to kick it back to the planning board, to see if they can come up with better?
It's too late.
It's printed, right?
Too late. They're not obliged to. They've already had to hear it. Okay.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen vote to not support Article 20 zoning by law on, in, in open space development.
Second?
Moving second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstaining.
All right, so, three, uh, an abstaining.
And does it go in the town warrant like that? Three, one, Jerry? The vote go in there?
Three, one, one.
It, uh, we will have it here, three, one, one.
Number 29.
Yeah, it's a majority vote, correct? That's in the two thirds. Okay, let's move on to, uh, number 29, sort easements on Chris Mill Road and Surrey Road.
This is, this is part of the host community agreement that, um, the town has accepted. If we, uh, well, it's already on this, I would say, whether we support or not support. We support the community host agreement, I would expect some support here.
Well, yeah, I think it's, I mean, everyone's free to do their own. I think it's just going to send some sort of mixed message if we support, you know, if we sign the host community agreement and we don't support this. I think, almost by default, by signing the, um, uh, host community agreement, that it's almost saying that we support this article, you know?
My question would be, and maybe Keith has the answer to this, is are we legally bound to vote in favor of this?
No, that's what we just talked about.
No, in fact, I talked to, uh, I had this conversation with David Hale last week, and I said, "Well, you know, we, we vote, the board voted to put the article on the warrant as required. The Board of Selectmen has not yet taken a position whether they support the article, and we do parse the two actions, you know, putting it on as one, adopting recommendations as another." Legally, no, and I think that the board can, can, you can draw a judgment about whether your, what your intent was in signing the agreement. If it was to carry this fall all the way to town meeting with a favorable recommendation, then you would support it. If you think that the agreement said something else, then I would, I would, I would suggest that you not, uh, take a negative position on this article. I think that would be outside the bounds of what you can do.
My feelings were, let the voters decide on this. This is a voter issue. I was in favor of the host community agreement, for the primary reason that it gave us the ability to prevent 40Bs from happening in the future. With regards to these lots, I think it's, it's up to the voters if they want to decide to let it, let it happen. That's just my opinion. So that did not influence my decision to vote for the HCA host community agreement. It's staying up to the voters, that's my opinion.
I was with you until I talked about the other one. And if we make the recommendation on holidays, I think it's, I think we make recommendation on more. That's just what I meant.
Well, again, we have the, we have the option of saying, if, and I've heard you say it once, and I've heard the chair say it once, you know, leave it to the voters. We can take the position of, it's strictly a matter for the voters, we take no position. We, we entered the agreement in good faith. Now you decide whether we did the right thing or not, and whether you want this to happen.
Yeah. I think it, yeah.
I'm not against it. I'm just saying what, you know...
I think it's contradictory, though. I, I know, I know, I'm unfair. I think it just seems, I mean, I see your point, I see your point. I just think since we did the host community agreement, there needs to be, I don't know.
But I didn't, I didn't vote for the host community agreement because of this. I voted for the host community agreement.
No.
Because of the prevention of future 40Bs.
But you vote, but basically by voting...
I see the distinction you're making.
But basically, voting for some, so, by voting for something included in something that you voted in favor of, ergo, are you voting for that, you know? That's where we're at, I guess.
So what he's saying is, well, I'm not putting words in there, but what it sounds like he's saying, is, is, well, he may not agree with this particular segment. This is not the host community agreement. This is just one piece of it.
Don't blow the baby out with the bathwater, it's personal screening, everything is.
Right, exactly.
Chairman Chapman, I, I live on Surrey. May I be heard? I know I've overstayed my welcome.
I'll say the same thing again.
I was, I was good last time.
You don't overstay your welcome. That's, that's great, great. You don't overstay your welcome. It's the content sometimes.
So I, I, I live on Surrey, right? And, um, there are several lots. The revenue that would be derived, should those lots be, be built, is of course the property tax, which is roughly $9,000 per unit. Give or take, at this point in time.
I think it's more than that.
I, I double one.
It's a hundred thousand for all those lots? Or that may be inclusive of the ones up, on the other side of Chris.
I'm just saying the annual, the annual revenue to the town once built.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
However, the cost per student, according to Massachusetts in 2011, is $12,600. Couple thousand dollars set, you know, setback, or offset by, by state money. It's roughly $10,000 per student, assuming not special interest, or special needs. Those houses will be four bedrooms. They'll have two point something children. Therefore, by education alone, the cost to the town per building is probably $25,000, notwithstanding other town services. For revenue, that'll be $8,000. So we'll take $250,000 on the front, for something that 2.5 years into it, no more than that, will burn that money, and from that point forward, it's all cost. Therefore, to say yes and recommend this, which has been established you don't need to, you're, you're saying, raise our taxes, because the net impact of this can only lead to taxes because of revenue negative, two and a half years in. Don't, don't vote to recommend a tax increase, in short. That's my request. Just maybe stay neutral and let the town decide.
Okay. I got a question. Wait a minute. You said you, you said you lived on Surrey. Do you live next to one of these? I don't know. You do?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I'm, I'm speaking economically. I mean, houses, no, single-family homes are not a bad thing.
Point well taken.
But it's a tax...
Even if you get the article we last discussed, here are seven lots, that if that by law had been in place and they'd been perked, they never would have been carved out.
Jerry, go ahead.
As I see it, it's a simple trade-off. $420,000 or whatever we get for about seven acres of land.
Bigger than that, Jerry. No more than 40Bs.
No more than, no, the 40B.
No more 40Bs.
Right, but that's, that's a separate issue. That's a separate issue, I mean, for the sub part of that. But the easement lots, it's, I think it was 250 plus the back taxes, which is what the fourth...
But any other citizen could pay those back taxes.
But, okay, yeah, let me, let me... The issue is...
The town's going to own these lots.
If the town says, "No easement," the town owns the lots.
Right.
That's seven acres out of development, seven acres of open space. I believe Mr. Finley mentioned that at least two of these lots are but upon, so there's certainly value in terms of public access there. The other several lots, we talk about community gardens, we talk about all...
But all the lots are but other developed lots.
Yes.
So they may have, they may have a value to the voters, if, and if the town, at the end of the day, if the town ends up owning them because we, because the developer can't tie into a, to a...
It's not about single-family houses, it's about taxes.
But above and beyond that, you've got a point. It's cheaper to take land out of It's cheaper to take land out of development than it is to spend the money sold. When, when would say.
Excuse me, wait guys, guys.
Can I finish, please?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No.
That was inappropriate.
No, the point is, Mr. Simone's got a point. Historically, we've heard here from the Conservation Trust and others, it's cheaper to buy up land and take it out of development than to let it get development and collect the revenue. Here we've got a golden opportunity to do that, so from pure economics, from pure creation of open space, from pure adding to an existing trail system, it seems like we're much better off as citizens to not support the easement. I realize you folks are in a spot, maybe the answer is either you make a split decision or you just say, no comment or comment deferred to town meeting, I believe that has been done in the past.
Thanks.
And let the voters decide.
Thanks, Jerry. You got your elevator speech for town meeting, you're good. Go ahead, Rick.
Rick Finley, you wrote, I agree with both Chris and Jerry. The economics of it are long established, but it's just going to, all these houses that are being voiced upon us by only.
We should never let this subdivision in town.
Are going to be only new schools before you know it. For seven lots, keep them in conservation.
No, I don't, I hear you, it's all been said and I don't disagree, it's, what we're focusing on now is whether or not we make the recommendation, so, you know, I'm just trying to keep it focused.
One final point, please. I think we got your points with the economics. Let's, let's go on and get the recommendation out of the way. Unless we've got any other.
I have any discussion amongst us.
My problem with this dates back to when we signed the community.
Host community agreement?
Yeah. When we voted for that, we, in my opinion, we agreed to put it on town meeting.
Correct.
Right. It didn't, no way did it say that we would recommend it, so, and my, I'm different than, I'm, I'm a stalemate here. Because I want to say yes because we said it in the first part, but in the other part, I have, I have my doubts, and I'm not talking about taxes, I'm not talking about saving land, my concern is the easements of the future. So I'm not sure.
What happens underneath that?
Let's think about individual, Joe.
You mean the.
Individual easements, you know, are left up to the town, the citizens of the town to make the decision.
Are you worried about what happens?
So don't compare it to that.
Are you worried about what happens to these easements or the, like you feel they were set to precedent for future easements?
These and, how is that a precedent for the future? But again, it goes to town meeting and the citizens of the town ultimately decide.
Right.
On any, on any easement.
What's the language, defer to town meeting, is there something done in the past, defer to town meeting or defer to?
It's been done in the past.
It's, yeah, recommendation forthcoming is what we put in, or that you.
Take no action.
Say that the Board of Selectmen has no recommendation.
No recommendation.
Well, along on our credits, I make a motion that we make no recommendation on this article.
I'd second that. Okay, that's been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay. I just feel we should need, I just feel it's contradictory, that's all.
Okay. Last one. Community septic repair loan program. I think Alex, you wanted to talk about that? Was it you else?
Yeah, yeah, I did want to talk about it. We got a little bit into this, the dialogue of the Board of Health, but I'm not sure that we're in full understanding of the points, but you need to know that what we're signing on to here is not a simple loan program. There's an inspection and enforcement program here and that that program would, we're signing on to that if we go with the program. I'm all for helping people who can't afford new septic systems, but I'm totally against septic police. And, and, you know, that's, that's the method for dealing with that, and I'm concerned that this then implements that. And if you read the program.
Where? Wait to see, wait to see, it's all about loans, it's all inspections or.
There's somewhere in there Ted, there's a discussion about creating an enforcement plan, so on and so forth.
Is that just for the folks that get their loans?
It was in the guidance documents that we provided from DEP.
To seek the town of Ultra Pro, the sum of $300,000 for the purpose of financing the falling water pollution facility projects, repair, replacement or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to agreements with the Board of Health and residential property owners, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in of the general law that meet this appropriation to the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said sum and issue bonds and notes forwarded therefore under in chapter 20 and 8 of the general law. That project financing cost shall.
That's the catch, right?
What's that? What, what?
If we enter into this program, we're following the state's guidance on it.
For what?
We're agreeing, we're agreeing to go along with their requirements.
So it says, so.
For the bonds?
That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow said sum and issue bonds or notes therefore under Mass General Law Chapter 11, Section 127B, 1/2. So to me, that sounds, that sounds like borrowing requirements of the general laws.
Well, what.
That project and financing.
Yeah, what we discussed the night that this article was put in, because what you also had in your packets that night was the guidance documents from DEP, that there were, that the DEP program stated that there was a community septic management program, it wasn't defined in the materials we have. I don't have any more information on that tonight, if there's questions about that. I think what we may want to do, since it's Board of Health's article, is ask for them to come here and explain it further before you adopt a recommendation. I don't, we don't have any further information to address.
I just don't see anything here about.
Not in the article itself.
Okay, so, all right.
It's in, in order to accept this program, because we're not, we're not, we're not creating, this isn't the town alone control, we're accepting a program whose guidelines are provided to us by the state. And in that, and when I read that, I, there were words like enforcement and the words that Keith just used describing it, that's my level of concern. We can adopt an article that requires us to follow another, that is all well-intentioned. I mean, this is, this is a great project, if this is simply, you know, they give us the money to loan the people that have the septic system, but I think there's strength, and that's what I'm concerned.
They don't give us the money, we borrow the money so that the townspeople can apply for the funding through the Board of Health.
But we are implementing the state plan in order to do it. That's what we're signing up to.
And we have to have an inspection program?
That I don't, no, what, I can't answer that this money is through the state program, I cannot answer specifically all the requirements of the state program.
Not taking any action.
So that's the.
Can I ask you a dumb question? Not a dumb question.
No, no question's a dumb question.
Okay, fair enough. I'm not going to push a button. Look, by my read of Article 31, I'm rescinding borrowing authority, isn't that $250,000 in a septic repair kitty?
No.
It, there is an old project for, done many years ago that was never borrowed, it cannot be applied to this program that we're looking for from DEP, yeah.
But it comes back as free cash, right? No, no, because it was never borrowed, it was never borrowed.
So.
When we had the meeting with the Board of Health, I asked the chair about it and that information was still too new at that point for them to.
So why don't, why don't we schedule them for our next meeting to.
And we can still take a recommendation at that time?
Yeah. All right. We need to make a motion on that or not?
No, we'll have.
So we did everything except for 30.
Yep.
Everything's done except 30.
All right.
So 5D, Mr. Chair, is the annual count of action for specific night. Any issues? More than that, we make a vote.
No, sounds good. This is the ballot question. Right? 5D. 5D, yeah. 5D, let's get everybody down.
That's what I'm looking for. Shuffling around here, someone else.
We execute the warrant.
Yep. The procedural motion.
Wait, what are we on?
5D.
That's a procedural.
Right, okay, then why is the ballot question behind it?
Because it's the, it's added as a valid question.
Oh, okay.
If you, the document you're going to be signing is the legal document.
All right, all right.
Where the question is, has been inserted.
That was a stupid question.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to execute a warrant for the annual town election to be held on Saturday, May 11, 2013, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the Chawford K Jameson Little School, 55 Russell Street, and to Director Constable, both said warrant forthwith.
Second. Move second, and all those in favor?
Aye. Does Dana know she's getting up an hour earlier this year?
No.
Is that what she said?
Okay, all right, cruising right along here at 10 o'clock at night. Our, item number six, Mass DOT land damage period. Route 119, great road alterations. Now, we've been kind of talking about trying to put some information on our website, I guess they've got a meeting coming up about this.
Yeah, this is something else, though. This is, this is, this is our project.
Oh, our project.
This is our Route 119 Great Road alterations project, and a portion of it involves taking the town property.
By DOT?
Right, so we, along with all the other affected property owners, are being asked to sign this set of paperwork, so that.
This is for the riding of 119 and the lights and all that good stuff.
Well, it's actually, it's given Mass DOT drainage easement from the police station to have the, so they have the right to go in and maintain the.
The drainage?
Drainage things.
Ready?
Ready, go.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to execute a land damage agreement with the Massachusetts Bound and Transportation Highway Division relative to the taking of 11,337 square foot area of town-owned property in connection with the project for alteration of Route 119 Great Road.
Second. Move the second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Here we go, Jim.
All right, Jim.
You're rocked.
Resignation of employee, just looking for permission when they replace them, it's a negative impact, funded, he's a body.
Wow.
Wow. So that's a big one.
Yeah, an hour and 45 minutes later, I should have been out of here.
Sorry. Watch your TV, man. You got channel eight?
I do at home.
You know what we got to do, we got to put it into the pub, so you can wait up there.
The chair sets the agenda.
Bonnie worked up the numbers before she left.
So you know that we were supposed to be done an hour ago, so. Good debate time.
Ready?
All right, I'm ready.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to quit the highway operations, made a request under the staffing vacancy review policy to bill full-time parks working informant vacancy through internal posting and promotion for further to fill the resulting vacancy in full-time and equipment operator labor.
Second. Move in second, and all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks for hanging out.
Have a good night.
Joint meeting.
How long before the alarm goes off?
Four or five hours.
Joint meeting with the planning board for the Fletcher property on, this is the 11th, 38th, 11th. I am unfortunately not going to be here on the 11th. So who's going to that meeting?
So I guess, you know, at the last meeting of the planning board, Mr. Nark made a recommendation to table the two zoning changes and come up with a committee, Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and the public to have input in regards to the extensive recreation bylaw, so. Conservation, what was it? Yeah, conservation, yeah.
Agriculture.
Yeah, agriculture, right, agriculture committee. So I guess the, there's really no motion, but just discussion, who's going to, who's going to attend in regards to represent the Board of Selectmen?
I would like to attend, but unfortunately 11th, I can't, I can't.
There's two other things that night, too.
Yeah, it's a lot of law, that's a topic.
The library trustees are inspect, are introducing a new director and there's ribbon cutting for a new business.
Yeah, up on Air Road.
We probably should mention that Greg and Mark Montanari were able to meet with Mark Rassikot one day last week.
And yourself.
Date, and myself and Maron, the day that Mark was here to meet with Suri today, we grabbed him for about half an hour just to see if he'd be interested in facilitating the process he is. He's trying to work up a proposal to his boss to be able to have MABC pay for it, but, you know, he's, he's come this far with us and is, you know, is happy to.
Yeah, because we want to put this through that public process that we kind of did with.
I think we want to represent if.
Not as a committee.
Well, you've been there.
We were not looking to form a committee because of the time that takes, that it was rather, it would be a series of joint meetings between the two boards at least and any other boards that wish to participate and open to the public, but that you'd sort of be, those boards would be posting a process that would be facilitated by.
So joint meetings.
By the planner.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so that's, you know, just as.
Who's going to run the meeting?
Mark Rassikot. Yeah, he's not going to run Thursday. He's not going to run Thursday.
That's the right mark.
He's not going to run Thursday, but we did want to at least regroup that night to be able to go over proposed time people. I hope to get a proposal from Mark Rassikot.
I'll do my best to be at this one, because.
Yeah, I will, too.
Yeah. I think I can, no, I've just had.
I'd like to try to be.
I've just had a couple nights free up.
All right, that's the only one I can, this week.
Is that, wait, is this Thursday?
This, this Thursday.
I think Conservation Trust people are going to go to the ribbon cutting.
On Air Road?
Earlier in the evening.
I was going to say, they cut down trees.
Isn't that early?
I thought it was at five, five o'clock.
Yeah, I got it down as five. Well, hold on. Is he?
Five to seven, I think.
I got the electronic one, but here's the official one.
I'm going to go to that. I think it's five o'clock.
I got another one.
How can you not go?
Joe, yours fell out of packets in my.
Five to seven.
I was wondering why everyone else is here.
Ribbon cutting at 5:30, food, fun, cocktails, tours and networking.
Hey, there you go. It'll be useful after that.
We'll be in real form to go meet the library director.
At least I'll have time for dinner before a meeting.
All right, so it sounds like we've got most of the board that's going to be there. So.
So Mark will be facilitating this meeting?
No.
Future meetings.
He'll be facilitating future meetings. So, but we are committed to the Fletchers to meet every two weeks until August 1st to carve out.
So who is establishing the agenda and who will then take the lead on running the meeting?
Well, Mark Rassikot will facilitate the meetings once he's engaged, but until that point, it's, we're going to be joining the planning board's meeting, so it'll be Mark Montanari.
It's not a planning board meeting, it's a joint meeting.
It's a joint meeting.
It's a joint meeting.
It's on the planning board's agenda.
It's a joint meeting.
So.
We need to have some input.
No, I'm not saying we're not going to have input here, but it's on, it's on.
It's their meeting.
It's their meeting that they're running, we're joining it for this.
On the 11th, on Tuesday.
What time?
Going forward.
I haven't seen what time.
Correct, correct, correct. Sorry, I should have said that.
But they start after 7:00.
Oh, yeah. They start at 7:30. But they haven't posted their.
Where, where it went wrong?
Here.
It'll be on TV. Yay.
Because what we do, when we do have the joint meetings in the future, we should have round tables somehow.
Yeah. What we did with like Area A, Area B, we actually met in the middle school and, you know, we had it, it was more of an open forum presentation and all that stuff.
We met at the police station.
That would be.
Yeah, police station, perfect.
You can have a round table. Round table. It's good enough for the school committee. Mr. Cofflin, you got something real quick?
Yes, sir. The reception for the new library director is from 5 to 7, so that, you know, you still could come to this, the negotiation meeting with the Fletchers.
Okay, thank you. They serve food there, too?
It said, it said, is good a menu, is this other one from 5 to 7?
I missed, I missed dinner tonight. Somebody's sparring.
Well, I had that six.
We're good with that.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
To approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for Monday, February 25th.
I'll give them down out. Move in second, and all those in favor?
Aye. I was absent at the meeting, so someone else.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Selectmen's meeting minutes for Monday, March 25th, 2013.
Second. Second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our next meeting starts the 11th with the planning board.
Oh, as amended.
Oh, as amended?
Yeah, that was the.
There's an amendment in that?
That was, that was the February 25th we're amended. Oh, sorry.
Okay. So our next meeting is when, April?
April 27th, two weeks from tonight.
Mr. Chair, before we close, I'd like to request that Mr. Bergman look into the files for a letter that Mr. Bergman recorded, that you have on file.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, folks.